I am going to start the recording and the meeting so that guests can come in. Hi Kaylee, welcome. Hi Jackie, Jacqueline, I'll call you Jacqueline today.
Oh fancy. Oh, you were not gonna call me Jacqueline, oh.
Yes, hi Jackie and Jacqueline is the student rep.
We'll get started shortly, I'm just waiting a couple more minutes to make sure everyone gets on.
Sorry, I accidentally clicked the raise hand.
Okay, no problem Kaylee, welcome.
Well Erica, while we're just waiting a second, I'll just chit chat for a second. It's gonna be super hot this, really beginning this Friday. And running through the end of the forecast period, which is next Thursday, it's probably gonna be hot longer than that. But the timeframe Friday through next Thursday, it's gonna be mid 90s and up. With Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, 100 degrees and up. And the overnight lows are gonna be very uncomfortably warm. The overnight lows are gonna be the mid upper 60s. So there will, there will not likely be any cooling in the evening. So just a heads up, we're in for a stretch of weather that us Oregonians don't usually encounter. So stay hydrated, keep an eye on each other and your friends and family. And, and stay safe during this heat, heat wave.
Okay, I'm just gonna run through real quick, make sure we have everybody on here. We're just missing one. Well, in the interest of time, we're gonna go ahead and get started to make sure we give all of our items on the agenda enough time for us to cover. So I am starting our work session for the Hillsborough School Board. And our first item on the agenda is our Native American PAC report with Fran.
Sorry, trying to get my device to work. Good afternoon, everyone, as you know, we've had a concerted effort to go ahead and work closely as we engage with our families. So Olga is here today to work with, to talk about the work she's been doing with Daria and the PAC for the Native American group.
Hello, everyone, good evening. Olga Cunha, for those of you that don't know me, I oversee federally funded programs at the district level. And I am proud to say that Daria and amazing team of educators from our district and parent leaders have really taken the Native American PAC to the next level with the level of support that they bring to students and families with the advancement in running programmings, programming for students, especially students who are graduating, recognizing all of the different groups from elementary all the way through high school. And so I would, I can go on and on talking about all the great things, but I would rather give that space and time to Daria and our parent group and the teachers that are here to support her. So please help join me in welcoming Daria Martin Bigum.
Daca Day, good evening, she, Daria Martin Bigum Gonsey. Greetings, my name is Daria Martin Bigum. I'm an enrolled member of the Yavapai Apache Nation and a lifelong resident of the Talawada Nation in Smith River, California. And I just want to thank you for this opportunity to come be a part of this conversation. I'd like to give the other PAC members who are here the time to introduce themselves as well. So I'll pass it on to Catherine.
Hi, I'm Catherine Yeager. I'm a teacher at Hillsborough High School and I am citizen Potwamamihe Hispanic and German descent.
Hello, I'm Jenny Sanchez, I'm a member of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron, a descent of the Sludge Tribe. Also a employee with the Hillsborough School District, I am a SDA over at Pointer and part of the PAC team.
And Mindy, go ahead and introduce yourself. I saw her on earlier, so something might be happening. We have Mindy Forrest, who is our PAC chairperson. She, her husband is from the Klamath Tribes in California. So she has two children that she is representing in our school district. And I think you got it now, Mindy? Okay, well, again, I just wanted to thank you for this invitation, we can advance to the next slide. So tonight, I just was wanting to take this opportunity to share about our PAC successes. Cause I, as Olga said, it's, it was, it's been a group effort and especially during this year, it has been all hands on deck. And so I'd just like to take this time to share about our PAC successes, our challenges and partnerships and opportunities for partnerships for this school year and for hopefully for our next school year. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So here's just an overview of some of the events that we were able to carry on with our PAC this year. So all year, we had, we tried our best to keep engaged, keep our community engaged and try to find ways to participate, of course, being distanced and, and also using the technology that we all had access to as well as collaborating with our, some of our other federal programs in the district building. So as you can see here for our PAC events, we were able to do some drive-through giveaways and Mindy will speak on that later on. But we did our monthly PAC meetings and I will say, I would say we had a pretty average attendance, but what was really neat is I feel like we filtered through a lot of different parents in that time. So it was, there were some that were consistently consistent all through the whole school year and there were some that would pop in, so it was really neat. I felt like we got to meet a lot of our parents this way. In December, we were able to host some activities, because again, by that time, we had been in our houses for a long time. Needing that break for around Christmas time. So Jenny Sanchez was on board to do some beading classes online. So she took the time to do some YouTube videos and really walk our families through how to bead some beautiful Christmas ornaments, so that was a lot of fun. And then in the November, December, or excuse me, November, January timeframe, Vanessa over migrant ed and college and career coach also reached out to me and said, hey, what if we did a joint effort? Because again, why, you know, do multiple of these college pep workshops? And we can bring our families and programs together. So that was a lot of fun and we did that through November, two weekends in November, and then another opportunity in January as well. So that was great. So then again, in May was the same thing, it was like, you know, trying to figure out what graduation would look like. We wanted to make sure that we sent off our seniors in a good way. And so we partnered with the federal programs at the district level and did a nice little send off for our, for all of our seniors. But for, for us, it was for our program seniors. I would say another great event that we had is this year is we built a stronger partnership with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron. And this was established during the naming of the Potwamamihe Ridge School. So I just again, wanna thank you for all of those who were involved, who directly contacted and worked with the tribe in the naming. And also just all the cultural elements that were involved there. So it's gonna be exciting to finally get that opportunity to walk through that school when it's that time. And until then, I just, it's like Christmas for me, it's really exciting to think about what that's gonna be like. I feel like as a district, we really paved the way of showing how it can be done and how can it be done right? So stay tuned on that, because I think it's gonna be, I, I think in my opinion, we're gonna be trendsetters. So, and I just again, wanna thank all the board members who, who stood behind that and really saw the vision for, for this. And so thank you. Another thing that we've been working on currently is Washington County has been reaching out to our parent advisory committee. In November, they reached out to us in the very beginning to see about having some participants read Native American Heritage Month proclamation, the beginning of November. And so again, Jenny, I reached out to her then as a parent, or for me, going to her as a parent and saying, would you be willing to help with this project? And again, her suggestion was like, let's get a senior on board too. So we were able to share that with Ellis Smith, who was our graduating senior from Century. And now currently, we, both Jenny, Catherine and I, we just got off of one of their advisory committee meetings like at 4:45. And we're just again, gaining traction, they're working on their land acknowledgement. So they reached out to a very diverse group of native leaders, but they are also wanting to see what would it take to put on Washington County powwow? So that's something, again, that's a big momentum, but we just don't know all the details yet. But we're currently, that's in the talks. So hopefully I can, in the November, when we come back and report, we can say what, what has been happening. Tonight, I was hoping, but again, if many of you, I don't know if you have taken any of the professional development, but we have partnered with the Confluence Project and they've offered professional development for our staff here in our district. And I will say, the very first registration that was open, I want to say it was about 43 participants had signed up from Hillsborough. So we kinda just went in there and just got a lot of those spaces right off the get-go, so that was really exciting. And one part of this that I think has been really helpful are the staff presentations that we've been able to participate and asked to be a part of. And I will share with you later on, some of the comments that came from some of our exit tickets from those presentations and just again, the relationships that were created. One part, one highlight, I think for me this year has been able to come together with a network of native staff who are in our district. So as we see here, we have Jenny and Catherine, who have just stepped into the roles of forming a group where we can come together and Sarah Crane has been very instrumental in bringing us together and asking us, what can we do to better serve our students? And so in those meetings, it was our times to talk about what can we do to, you know, again, better identify, better to help our families that are struggling at this point? Or that when we get back into school, how can we better serve them? So we'll go to the next slide. So again, these were just a few of the successes that we had, we had seven seniors graduate. We have 127 students enrolled in our program. And that seems to be the average enrollment. But again, I'm hoping in this next year, we can try better to identify, working more closely with school staff to help them understand the, just the application and the enrollment process. And again, another proud, like, point in this successes of this school year was the parents giving voice and direction to the plans and process of Potwamamihe Ridge Elementary Project. And thank you Casey for coming to our meetings and being a part of that process and also inviting me to go be a part of those planning meetings and meeting the architect team. And just again, I was like, I was going in between both meetings of the architect team to the PAC team. And then in May, we finally were able to come and bring that group together to just talk about all the different elements that they were going to be having in the school. So that was just a great time. And I again, thank you for the board who came to one of our meetings, just to participate in conversations and, and listen to us. I know the last time I had spoken to Martin and Mark being there. And I also want to recognize Adira, who also was there and just again, just that time that you guys took to come be a part of that. And obviously for Erica, for charging on, just to help that name get through. One success that we've had this, in this half of the year, has been a graduation coach who was hired on. And again, that was our very own Jenny Sanchez and her working at Pointer Middle School really gave her the ability to get in there and really, I mean, literally, I mean, not touch because you can't, but you know, just be right there with the students, which for this year, I feel was like, one of those things that was so hard to get past the computer screen. So I just again, thank her for taking on that and just, I mean, we didn't have much time, but she really went well and just reached out to the students and parents and really did her best to just let the students know that she was there. I'll save that one for you, Mindy, the drive-through, but district staff at, that were present at our PAC meetings really gave me like the encouragement, as well as our parents, for them to see some of the reoccurring faces that they would see every month. And I'm hoping that in the, this next year, that will continue to grow. I mean, we've had talks of student success coaches coming and grad coaches and people who would just be maybe on a constant rotation, just so families can be aware of the staff that they need to interact with their, their students and their families. And again, another success is just the well welcomed the staff really wanting to be a part of the Confluence professional developments. And like I said, that was so clear by our high enrollment numbers. And just hearing the, the teachers even afterwards come back and send emails and say, thank you, and that everyone should be doing this. And so again, I'm always encouraging them to tell their friends about it. But Mindy, maybe you would like to just take this time, if you're able to, to talk about the drive-through, because you had a very active role in that. Think if she's not. She may have had to go off, she said. Okay. Okay, so she's having some computer tech, technology difficulties and that's okay. I would just say, Mindy has been great to work with. I could not have done the different drive-throughs. And again, we, we had one scheduled, you guys, for this past Monday and we were hoping to report about how great it was. But the high temperatures kinda scared us away from that. And now I'm like even more afraid, because now, I think it was, was it Martin, you were giving us our news upcast or update? And I'm like, oh my goodness, it's just gonna get hotter, so, and there's no cooling. So we will most likely be doing that last push for our drive-throughs. If you've been to the district building in the board room, there is just a bunch of books that Cindy Heard has done an awesome job in finding books that are written by native authors and picture books from, from K through high school, we've got books covered. So I'm really excited to be able to get those in the hands of our students and also just activities that they'll be able to do for these months. And we're also, next week also, or actually tomorrow, planning on meeting in a park to do bear grass weaving activities. So it'll be a great day, so it won't be too hot, so that, that's good. But we'll go on to the next slide and I'll let our next speaker just share with you maybe some of the challenges that we face. So Jenny, if you are ready.
Jenny, Jenny's been a teenager. So sorry, Daria.
Okay, oh yeah, yes, I see that, sorry, my phone's now telling me this, so, okay, so you guys, I really did try to give you some other voices, I'll just have you know. But our challenges, these are just a few things, again, when, when talking with parent staff, what were some things that were challenging, even things that I recognized were maintaining the connections with families? Like I said, though, we saw a lot of families come in and through our meetings, it was really hard to, to maintain the same parents and the same group that we had had in the previous years. Like I said, there's, there were good things and there, there are great things about technology and it's just learning that balance now and figuring out what will it look like in the future. I know in some of the parent surveys, so we had parent surveys that we sent out to families as well as to staff and students. And some of the things that they had asked that were challenges were, for, for families were to need more staff to engage with students at the building levels. And I think sometimes, like for me, it's hard being at all the different meetings to be able to get down into the school buildings to, like I said, to interact, to see what those challenges are without, you know, not through emails and stuff, but really talking with teachers. Catherine, I don't know if you would like to speak on any of the challenges that you faced as in, as being in a classroom teacher for this year, for just our group of students.
Yes, thank you, Daria, I think one of the challenges that we still face is that I think for a lot of our staff, and I will say myself included, we are having to relearn things or learn things that we were never taught. And so that's why the Confluence training is so important. I had the opportunity to take it earlier this year in November and actually with the help of Daria and Jenny and people throughout the state, actually really implemented for my own, for my students. But again, one of those challenges is there is a lot of work that we as adults and staff members still have to do to be, to be ready to teach those things. And a lot of it's just not having had that opportunity through our own education to have ever learned these things. So again, providing that time and space for adults to learn about tribal history, to learn about Native American history, Alaska Native history. And then the continued work, I know I have had the opportunity to work with Olga and Fran on the Mesoamerica languages and with Cindy and just implementing even that conversation into curriculum that's already being taught. And getting to hear from students that these are languages they're speaking outside of the home, or sorry, that they're speaking at home has made all the difference. So just the, I think the challenge is continuing that growth and continuing to understand where, as we adults have to grow so that we can meet our kids where they're already, where they already are. A lot of our kids were really excited to talk about the indigenous languages they're speaking at home, their own experiences and what they've learned that we never had the opportunity yet to learn. So I think that's just one of the challenges, to make sure that we're ready to meet the kids where they're at, because they're ready. So just making sure that we, as the adults, are surrounding these students and that we're ready to, to support them.
So we can go ahead and advance to the next slide. Again, these are just some of the partners that we were able to bring alongside of us this school year that have been so instrumental. And again, hoping for next year, we have more that I'd like to add to this collection. I like to fill this slide up, because again, I'm about collaborative work and I feel like, yes, I just wanna see partnerships continue to grow. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So these are just some opportunities that I wanted to just leave with our board here of ways you can interact or engage with our native community locally as well as just nationally, but always looking at like in our hometowns, like how can we engage? And I just wanted to give this opportunity to, with the time that we have left, is to introduce. So Catherine said she was a teacher, but now she does have another role. And I'm really excited for this position that she is taking on in the next fall school year, because I do believe it will provide us with more opportunities for our students to, to grow and our staff to grow in this area. So if you wanna just kinda say a few things about this Catherine, then feel free to.
My gosh, thanks, Daria, I don't have it memorized exactly, but next year, I'll be serving as a TOSA for secondary humanities with a focus on the ethnic study standards, as well as the shared history, tribal history curriculum and helping to embed it within our schools. I think one of the major conversations that we have had as a group is the opportunity just for adults to learn and relearn so that we're ready to, to teach students these new standards, as well as just really understanding our, our history. I want to acknowledge that if you guys aren't aware, the tried tribal history and the shared history is actually in multiple subjects. I know one thing that I've been working on is to read more Native American authors. There's a Native American television show as well, Rutherford Falls, that actually has, the main actress is from Canby. So just continuing to make sure that, you know, hearing and listening and learning from other stories. I would really encourage all of you, if you're able to, to take the Confluence Project training run by, or partially run by one of our own parents, that I've had the opportunity to work with over the years. And really just being aware of Native American and American Indian history. So I'm really looking forward to this, this new role. I'm scared to step out of the classroom, I haven't stepped out of the classroom since I was three. So I'm, but again, really looking forward to this opportunity. So I would encourage you all in the summer, if you're able to, to pick up one of these books. Robin Kilmer is actually a native, is Potwamamihe as well. Just be, and hopefully in the fall, we can offer trainings for everyone. So again, thank you guys so much for listening to us. I know my, I would say my life has really been transformative this year with the work on the different committees. And again, to, if you had told me 10 years ago, I'd have an opportunity to speak to a school board from, you know, a kid and grew up in Bend. Again, I really appreciate these opportunities and just getting to hopefully make sure that our students have a voice now and for future generations.
Thank you Catherine, we'll go ahead and advance to our next slide. So these were our students, just, I think we have one that is not on here, but she did graduate from Miller Education Center, but these were, again, just those, I get excited when I see them. We were able to hand them out their Pendleton stools and just again, how the excitement that was there when they got to pick that up and who they're representing. And I'm proud of each one of these students and all the directions they're gonna go in the fall. So we can go to the next slide. So I just wanna leave you with this quote, I think it pretty much sums up this year for me, that there were some great minds that were put together and I think we did make a difference. And I'm really excited what this next year will bring. And yeah, I guess we have a little bit of time for questions or comments, but that's pretty much a wrap for us this year and looking forward to what we have in store for next year. A wrap for us this year and looking forward to what we have in store for next year.
Daria, one thing I just wanted to add, when we think about our schools and Catherine sells herself short. I've actually attended her class and she is. Phenomenal teacher as well as Jenny. Um, I Jenny is a grandparent. So these women are. And men, but the women that are here today are phenomenal um advocates for our Native American indigenous people. And so thank you for all your work. But also when we think back of all the work that we've been doing as a district with our parent advisory councils, it's so essential as we move into next year. To ensure that those packs are up and running and that we're able to um do what Khalifa has said. Mohammed Khalifa and Culture Response School Leadership would say, we are here together because our our schools serve our community, not our school. It it's not the reverse effect. We are there as the community helps to um. To just dictate what our schools need and they need representation. They need to hear the alternative voice. And so thank you so much for all your work with the pack, Daria, because it's important that we hear their voice. And as we move far forward as a district, that's gonna be key. So thank you all ladies.
Thank you. Um, again, thank you for this opportunity and this time and uh please reach out with any questions, comments, concerns. Um, we're always here. Again, um, the sprouting sweet grass can be found on um. On Audible through our county library. So check it out. Go listen to it while you're out in nature this summer.
Daria, uh, Martin, you have a question?
Uh, actually, I just wanted to uh join the conversation. Daria very, very graciously characterized it as a. Conversation at the beginning of her comments and uh and so I just wanted to contribute to that and add my voice. Um, I'm grateful for this pack. And uh for your your wisdom and your energy and your engagement. It's just so important that uh that students, that our Native American students see you and see us, you know, at this level. Just working the issues that they that they need is to work as a board. And um, Catherine, I also wanted to say I. 10 years back, you can't believe you see yourself uh speaking to a board, but all of us on this side of that issue have the similar uh uh. Experience as well. It's like, oh, my God, I can't believe uh here I am. So having said that, maybe 10 years hence, you're on the board. Um, and I would, I would just like to to. Put that out there that that the the district created these um culturally specific. Parent Advisory Councils to elevate your voice and empower your voice. And one aspect of that is is to get you involved in the district in a variety of ways, potentially maybe down the road as a board member. So I, we've already seen that example play out very successfully with Nancy. And so um, I I encourage everybody on the Native American pack to to stay engaged and find other ways to be involved as well, including board service down the road. Because we need, we need your wisdom and energy and engagement. And uh, thank you for coming before the board and speaking in a public setting like this. It's much appreciated.
I see Mike and Mark have your hand raised.
Thanks, Erica. Um, so Martin, first of all, 10 years from now, we have plans for Catherine to be helping run one of our schools. So let, so let's hold off on the bold on the board service site just until she retires at least. Um, I wanted to add my thanks as well to to this group. Um, Martin said it so well. Our goal has been to elevate elevate voices that we that we didn't have at the table. And um, I remember just, I think I mentioned this before, meeting Daria for the first time a couple of years back in a lunchroom and having a long conversation. And um to see where we are now, I really do believe that, Daria, we will reach your goal of becoming a trendsetter in this area and going to be. Just continuing to elevate the voices of those that we have not had the opportunity or the. Or I might even say willingness to hear from in the past. So really looking forward to the great work that this team is doing and to see where this goes. Thank you for being here.
Mark.
Yeah, just uh again, everybody to continue on with the thank you for for being here and um, you know, fighting through the technological barrier. I think perhaps the next time we speak, maybe we'll all be in the same room. It'll be awesome. And and hopefully uh one of those rooms is, you know, not our boardroom, uh unless that's what we use to facilitate it. So one of the things I really enjoyed was coming to your meeting and I, I know we're always welcome to just stop in, but I also know that. Sometimes a board member showing up can be a little weird or like uh. It make, what I don't want to do is come, you know, oh, sure, come anytime and then, you know, oh, gosh, she's here. So what what I hope is that we don't always have to come to us. I hope we still get an opportunity to come to you. Um, when it's a more official sort of invitation instead of just popping in. So I I know that that it that attending your meeting was very rewarding. And I hope that we have another opportunity to do that again. So you don't always have to come to us. We'd be more than honored to come to you sometime.
Thank you, everyone, for that wonderful uh presentation. And I would also just add, um, Daria, I think. One of the things that I was really interested in hearing is just about the um, I think it was Catherine that mentioned it around languages. And how that is just such, I feel like it's such a treasure that we have um people in our community that are able to speak. Um, these particular languages, uh some of them might be on the verge of extinction. And when we live in education, I feel like there is a responsibility for us to do what we can to pass that on. And to teach that. So I would highly um encourage you to help us uh in bringing us, you know, um proposed. Options or opportunities for us to make sure that we can nurture that in our district. And what what opportunities there might be for us to help our communities that um have this special gift um inability to do this. And um, the other thing I wanted to mention as well um was just thinking about. Um, how oftentimes I think a lot of the changes we want to see and implement. It's it's especially for communities of color. Um, it just, it's a long time coming. So sometimes it's just this feeling that, you know, so many things we want it to happen now, but also understanding that. The systems change that it takes to do this across our whole district. So we're all in step with each other and. And traveling, trying to navigate that complexity. And I just really appreciate having this partnership with our pack. To make sure that we're really thought partners and collaborative and the things that you help us prioritize, what's most important, what's most urgent for us to address. And I just encourage you to continue to do that. And thank you for um coming and sharing with us today.
Well, thank you and Erica and the board. And I really, the invitation is always open and come really, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll just, we'll deal with it. It's not that we're gonna be surprised. We actually would enjoy having other um s- school board, you know, there. So please, by all means, stop by. We'll be at Francis Park tomorrow. So be anywhere out there.
Thanks, everyone. Um, we are moving on to our next agenda item, which is our board chair and vice chair election update with Mike.
All right, thank you. Um, just uh, just to have a little setting the stage here. Um, in order for us to be compliant with board policy, we need to have elected a chair and vice chair by July 31st. And uh, as you're aware, we didn't originally have a meeting scheduled for July. And we have put one on the books for July 14th at five o'clock and it will, it would be a very brief meeting, uh no longer than 30 minutes. And we would, we would do that. It would be our last virtual meeting, actually. Um, and that the purpose of that would be to elect a chair and a vice chair. Um, so that's July 14th at five o'clock. You will, that is in your board packet as well, but just wanted to put that out there. And we would just have that one agenda item. Um, prior to that, we wanted to provide a brief opportunity this evening to give you an opportunity to discuss. Um, the leadership positions that are available and maybe indicate interest or have a little conversation about that. Uh, clearly, there'll be an opportunity for that to occur on July 14th as well, once our new board members are seated and can participate in the discussion. But just wanted to give you an opportunity to start that discussion this evening.
I swear I had a raise hand button a second ago and now it's gone. Somebody know where it went? Like. Alright.
It's not showing, but go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, it was there. Like, I know Martin raises his hand, I raise his hand, Mike raises it. So it really was there a second ago, I swear. Oh, there it is. Hey, it's back. Rose, you can control that. Ah. How about that? Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that I uh I'm interested in uh putting my name out there for consideration for board chair. For the July four fourteen, right, meeting. Um, I also think it's important to make sure that, you know, if it's gonna be a a multi-person. Option that the that the new board members have a chance to weigh in. So I'm glad that we're putting this uh decision off until. Um, they've been sworn in and are uh able to participate um fully. And, you know, one of the new board members may want to be chair or vice chair. I I do like to think of the vice chair role as a potential way to um understand the roles of leadership in the board. So what what I would hope is that um whomever considers uh becoming vice chair. You know, at least have in the back of their mind, or at least a plan to assume the chair role at some point. So that it's not necessary. And, you know, it maybe somebody else would like to be the board chair and that's, we can have that discussion as well. Um, but I, you know, I would hope that whomever puts their name forward to vice chair has a has a plan to sort of ascend to the chair position eventually. So. Those might, those are my two cents. Uh, look forward to, I don't know what we're supposed to do today, but.
That's good. Just any anybody else that has interest. Um, Martin?
Well, obviously, I won't be uh. Um, on the July 14th meeting, but I just wanted to share um m- my experience for the benefit of. Of those who um are considering it. Uh, it was, I think, really a collaborative effort with uh with Erica and I. Where we shared quite a bit of the work. And as email volume waxed and waned, there was considerable work. And um, and our strategy was to go back to the um. Uh, owners of the issue on the cabinet and really get some informed uh feedback and then. Not pretend to be an administrator, kind of repackage that as a board level of of response. Uh, but it would be informed by usually some uh professional educator, uh, you know. Messaging either from the cabinet official that owned the subject or from Beth as a communication superstar or sometimes from Mike himself. And so the, I think. That was quite a bit of the work. Um, but then more personally, I just wanted to share, um, I I felt the way I viewed the job. Was um to represent, you know, the board in a lot, in as many places as I could. And I, and I'm pretty sure. That was a sensibility Erica had because we ran into each other all the time to. To attend all the events that we could possibly fit in our schedule and participate in support of Mike and the district. And all the amazing things that are going on and sort of represent the board uh just by our presence, not not try to speak on behalf of the board, but just be there. And 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 bring the board with us as we participated. So um. It it was a lot of work. It was a lot of extra work. It was a surprising amount of extra work as I look back on having done it for two years. So. I would say if you're, if you're interested in doing that. Put your, put your, put your name in the in the hat, uh but just uh, and it is a job you can make of it as you see fit. But that's my two cents. And Lisa, you've had a lot of look at this one. I would encourage you to. To uh share your experience too, because I, I really, I love the work that you did as chair and I love the work that Erica did as chair. And I think you both have a lot to add to this conversation about people who are looking to do that job.
It's working. Can you hear me or not?
Yeah. Oh, no, you're you are having a little bit of technical.
Lisa, you're breaking up pretty bad. You might turn off your video and see if that improves your audio.
I I shared a lot.
It's not, it's not, um, we can't understand you. So.
How about now? Yeah. Alright.
Lisa, you you might turn off your video, Lisa, and see if that improves your audio.
Yeah.
Now?
He was pretty good. Yes.
Now? No, what's going on?
Sometimes it feels like it's gonna happen and then it's not.
So glad this era is coming to a close.
I know. Well, if you have any additional feedback, Lisa, that's sure, you can put it in the chat as well. I will, I will chime in and just say that um it has been three years of. Going from vice chair and then serving as board chair for the last two years. I think that it is an amazing opportunity to be in this leadership position. And I think that you learn so much just about. Just our education system and how um how it works, but also a lot about our own just governance. And um, I really appreciate it, the all the time that I've been on the board in this capacity. I'm looking forward for a little break and just being a regular board member uh that I can participate in um discussions and meetings in that capacity. Um, and and like Martin said, I think you you make this role what you what you like. Um, and is especially if you are a person that likes to represent our district in different spaces. This is a great opportunity to um learn also about our different partnerships and um engagement opportunities. Um, the other thing I wanted to add is that particularly the last two years, as you know, we had to navigate a pandemic. And we're thankfully coming out of that. So I think hopefully the workload that we had to go through the last two years. It's gonna be a, I think, different this this year for the new leadership that comes in. So that's a, that's also just one thing into, wanted to bring into perspective because I think a lot of our. Board members saw just the volume of activities that we had to be involved in. And it was very different than what we normally um would do. So I just wanted to bring that up. Shan, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. So I, I am not putting my name in the hat, but I did want to be. Uh, transparent just around my thought process and, you know, my consideration. Um, to let you all know that, yes, I absolutely have considered, you know, by whether vice chair or chair. Um, and I know that it is an incredible heavy lift and um a lot of responsibility. And I so appreciate those of you who have gone um before us and have paved the way for us and have really carried us on your shoulders. And so I so appreciate just your leadership uh for our board in uh in representing us. Um, where I'm at personally right now is, you know, I know that if I were to put my name in the hat for a vice chair role or the chair role, I would want to do so. Wholeheartedly and just with full force ahead. Um, right now, I don't feel that I am in a position to do that with. Um, the new baby and work dynamic and and just kind of how life is seeming to unfold. And so um, just wanted to share with you all that I, it's not that I'm, it's not that I don't want to, nor that I haven't thought about it. Um, but I, right now, it is challenging at this time um to. To put my name forward. And so just. Wanted to be transparent with you all um in that process. But I, I also just appreciate all of the work, the tremendous amount of work that has gone into each of you as you have um served in your uh capacity. So thank you.
Thank you, Shan. I don't see any more hand raised. And thank you, Lisa, for um typing in your chats on here. Oh, got it. She shared her thoughts last time on our meeting. So, okay, well. Seeing there's no other comments or further discussion on this, we are gonna move on to our next agenda item. Which is our, to discuss our 2021, 22 board meeting dates. Mike, do you want to start?
All right, thank you. Uh, we know that we, that you are going to want to get these on the calendar. So we're bringing these forward this evening. If you look at page seven in your packet, uh you'll see all of the dates listed there. Um, the the first two to be aware of are July 14th, which would be that, just that half hour session to. I go through the conversation regarding chair and vice chair. And then the other one to have on your radar early on is the August 3rd date for the full day retreat. Um, we do intend to be back in person um every meeting uh next year. And uh we are, uh, we're going to be talking at the retreat about what are some of the potential options when it comes to meetings? So that could look like we have uh in session, but there's some type of online opportunity. Uh, we are exploring that and Jordan will be bringing. We are exploring that, and Jordan will be bringing some options to us at the at the retreat on August third. So I really, at this point, we just need you to take a look at these dates. We're going to be voting on these later in the evening. And I guess at this point, if there are any dates that are going to be a conflict for a number of board members, this would be the time to bring that up and see if we need to make any adjustments.
Just one question that I had on this particular one. Oh, and Mark, I will get to yours was just for our new board members, if this has been shared to them so they can review.
Rose, do you want to answer that? I believe that you have already shared those with the new board members.
Yes, they have a new date. All the dates.
Thank you, Rose. Mark, did you have a question still?
We've shared it with the whole world. The board packets public. I guess as someone who's considering the chair role and maybe not starting out until July thirty, I know the chair and the vice chair have quite a bit to do with putting together the agenda in cooperation with you and your staff. How much of the agenda is really put together? And how much do you have to do like in fourteen days or thirteen days to have a data be ready?
So when it comes to the retreat agenda, that is something that we basically chip away at all year. Come up that we know we're going to need to spend a little more extended discussion time on those go on that agenda. We also have some items that are reoccurring when it comes to the retreat date. So that will be ninety percent baked by the time we have that conversation. And of course, there's always room for adjustment. But particularly with the retreat, we will have the stage pretty well set on that. And then after retreat, one of the things that we always do is we generate those presentations and those areas of interest from the board that we can share information on during the year. And so that helps to fill in the some of the board agenda items for the remainder of the year as well. So it will be, we'll be pretty much dialed in by the time we have that conversation with room for adjustment.
Thanks, Mike. Our next item on our agenda is announce our budget committee vacancies with Michelle Morrison.
Thank you, Erica. Can you guys hear me okay? Yes, thank you. This time every year, we announce our budget committee vacancies. There are seven budget committee members, and they are on a rotation for three-year vacancy and reappointment. And so we have positions three and four that will be vacant as of June thirtieth. Position three is currently held by Nina Carlson. And she was appointed to a three-year term in two thousand eighteen. And then position four is currently held by Christine Adams-Wanberg, and she was completing a term vacated by Kyle Taylor just this year. So she has reapplied for the position, the information, not her application, but everything is described in the board packet. Happy to answer any questions. The application window is currently open and will be through November first, twenty twenty-one. I would just like to encourage folks to apply. It's a terrific way to get your foot in the door serving in a leadership role and get to know the district. So do it.
Thanks, Michelle. Our next item on the agenda is announce our community curriculum advisory committee vacancies with Travis Raymond.
Thank you, Erica. Good afternoon, everybody. We also have seven openings next year on the CCAC. Those are two-year terms, and we will also have four student openings. So in your packet, you can see that we will continue to advertise those openings through the summer. And then we will have the opportunity for you to appoint to review those applications and appoint new members. We did also include two pages of demographic information. And with the permission of the CCAC, each year, we do a self-census survey, and we had thirteen respondents, six in our English, or six in our Spanish survey and seven in our English, and we compiled all the data into those two pages where you can see what elementary school boundary areas are represented, the gender identity, race, education level, background in education, what students, each member believes that they can represent at the table in conversation, and then who they would recommend we recruit in order to further diversify the committee. So that information is accessible to you as you recruit your friends and neighbors to serve on the community curriculum advisory committee.
Can you say how many applications we have for those seven positions thus far?
Rose, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have three. We'll also have a few folks reapply who may not have done that yet. We shared the application with them, and they could be, you know, we always encourage the board to consider folks who have already served because of the knowledge that they build in our processes and standards and how our system works.
And Travis, and I meant to ask this of Michelle as well, but I think that we had also discussed going to the different packs and presenting these opportunities as well. Is that correct?
Thank you, Erica. That is a kind of a regular tour that we will be doing. That's why we've extended the budget committee application window through November to make sure that we have those opportunities.
Thank you both on that. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and it's our comprehensive sexuality education. CSE biennial approval process update with Travis again.
Thank you. So this is an overview of our timeline and our process for getting to the review of our curriculum, which is required of you. And I'll have information to get you up to speed on that responsibility of local school boards. So go ahead and advance one, please. So the the administrative rule in the state of Oregon regarding local school boards and CSE is the following. Parents, teachers, school administrators, local health department staff, and other community representatives and persons from the medical community who are knowledgeable of the latest scientific information and effective education strategies shall develop the plan of instruction required by this rule and in alignment with the Oregon Health Education Standards and Benchmarks cooperatively. So we went through a comprehensive process regarding that last time, as the standards had changed and we had added Aaron's Law and things like that. Local school board shall approve the plan of instruction and require that it be reviewed and updated biennially, which means every two years, in accordance with new scientific information and effective education strategies. So each two years, the board has the responsibility to ask staff to review and update the plan in accordance with any new information and with updates in effective education strategies. And later, we developed a list of things that deserve consideration based on new information. Go ahead and advance one. So just to get everybody back up to speed on where we've been and where we're headed. The board approved our CSE plan of instruction in fall twenty nineteen. We then closed schools and partially implemented the curriculum. Some students were able to get it in class in time. And then you remember hybrid implementation happened this school year with a team of teachers adapting the curriculum to be delivered digitally. And a lot of outcomes came from that that were positive, and I'll share that in a minute. And then we are now engaging in a content revision process with your approval tonight. I want the board to support this process. And then the board will reapprove the CSE plan of instruction in fall, at least by winter twenty twenty-one. So we have a little bit of time here, but I wanted to be really transparent about the process that we're proposing and get the support of the board tonight. Allow you to ask any questions. Go ahead and advance one, please. So I won't go all over all of this in detail, but this is a reminder about what comprehensive sexuality education is because it's more than just body parts and condoms, as our teachers will say. It also includes a lot about safe relationships and boundaries and identity development. Go ahead. One more slide, please. Also, the laws in Oregon are complicated because human sexuality education is only one part of it. There's also Aaron's Law, which is child abuse prevention and healthy teen relationships, for example, which have informed what have become the standards. So this is very comprehensive curriculum as it's named. Go ahead, one more, please. This is also a helpful graphic that our teacher leaders came up with from the Oregon Department of Education, OHA, which shows the different components of health education. And comprehensive sexuality education is only a piece of our larger obligation to educate kids about being healthy and health education in general. So we're trying to build out other components of our health education program as well. And CSE overlaps with some other parts of that, like social emotional health. All right, go ahead. So with all that, it's important for leaders in the community to also remember that the outcomes for comprehensive sexuality education are as follows. Preventing sexual violence, delays sexual initiation, reduce rates of sexual activity, reduce sexual risk behaviors, i.e. number of partners, unprotected intercourse, et cetera. Reduce sexually transmitted infections, reduce unintended pregnancies, reduce anxiety, depression, and suicide, and have lifelong skills to thrive. So these would be the research-based outcomes of CSE that the Oregon Department of Education and the Oregon Health Authority remind us are why we engage in this at all. So go ahead. So here's the plan in four steps. Right now, we would establish a process between the board and staff. We'd be in agreement about what this process is. What would be reviewed? Who leads the work and who gives input? Then we have a content revision team that we identify that would review feedback and input from staff, students, and community that we've gathered over the last two years. We would then report and do a thirty-day review with the board in October, allowing revisions to be posted on our open and very transparent CSE website, and then the board would approve with a vote as we proposed in November of twenty twenty-one. So just wanting you to understand that right now, we have a team of our teachers, counselors, and local health partners like CARES Northwest and SARC, who would collaborate with us to review the plan. Advance one more slide, please. And these are just a list of topics for revision that's been proposed so far with the team. So we would go back and address areas of need. There was a feeling that our plan could be more complete when it comes to pre-K resources. Hillsborough Online Academy doesn't have an adequate plan for online CSE. And special educators believe that we can do a better job for students with disabilities with an adapted curriculum. We would reduce redundancies. Some of the elements of our plans show up in multiple grade levels in a row, and it's been told to us by by teachers that that's not necessary. We would review all lessons for language. There was one instance, for example, of language that could be reframed to be less victim blaming. We would update videos and lessons based on availability of video clips or new resources. There was an example of one one video clip that's not available anymore streaming. So we would replace that. We would consider using the digital tools that have been developed in the pandemic into the future because they were said to be effective and useful. We would improve Spanish translations and resources. We would reassess lessons to assure them match to the standards. And we would consider systems for ongoing revisions. For instance, if we got medical information that causes to add to the curriculum a bit about a sexually transmitted infection, that's a problem within our communities, we would want to be able to do that in between revisions. That was one proposal that came up. So these would be an example list of tasks that the revision team would go through and bring forward to you and the community. All right, I think there's one more. Yeah, just to be explicit about what we're asking for from you, we would like your support for the process to understand what the proposed process is and ask any questions tonight. We'd have a team of experts who will collaboratively make recommendations for improvements. The community will have a chance to review and give input during the thirty-day review process that's standard for different proposals we make for the board. And then the board will act to reapprove the plan of instruction for an additional two years. There is a plan, ODE has said that it's possible that in twenty twenty-four there would be a change to the standards, and that might trigger us to have like a more robust revision of our CSE plan. But at this time, there have not been changes to the standards since the last time you approved, and therefore the process will be a little more simplified and accelerated. I'm happy to answer any questions about that plan.
Jackie and then Lisa.
My question centers around the community feedback and what the community will have a chance to review and give input during thirty-day review. What does that look like? Is that like we did last time with meetings where people can come? Is that a, what exactly does that look like to you? Is it a survey? Is it in person? I just want to know what that looks like.
According to the team that we put together, the the idea would be to post all all of the revisions in a place where anybody could access them so that you could go through. And if there were a new video clip, you could see the new video clip. And that you wouldn't have to dig through the entirety of the K-12 curriculum to find the changes. So we would try to highlight in an easy to find way what's been changed.
And we would only take input on things that we are looking at changing, not things that we've already approved. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
No, that's a great question. We would always take input on the thing as a whole.
Right.
But on the thing as a whole, we would want to be getting feedback on the items that have been changed. Those would be the the items that would be, you know, we might reconsider if something were, say, culturally inappropriate, that was the suggested revision, then we would want that feedback within the thirty days.
But we won't, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is we won't revisit the curriculum in its entirety of what we've already what we did last time and have already approved, just the the changes. And then we continue to receive input throughout the years.
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Lisa and then Mark.
Make sure that it works. Can you hear me? Yes, no, sort of. What is going on? Okay, is it better if I type or?
It's better now. So just keep going. Yeah.
I don't know what's happening. All right. I just wanted to say that it seems like a pretty intense process for a biennial update. It would, it's good to be thorough, and it's good to be open, but it does seem like, you know, we just went through a whole lot of evaluation feedback with our community two years ago. And I love that continually improving is part of the plan from the state. I think that's really important, but I would say I don't, I don't want us to get too caught up in a lengthy process when we just had one. So so I like the idea of implementing a process for kind of ongoing revisions and the specific targeted areas of focus. And then, of course, making sure that we're checking for updates to the science, since that is, you know, the main driver at the state level for this curriculum throughout the state of Oregon, not just in Hillsborough. So I I'm definitely in support of the process if that's what you're looking for. And it, I'm excited to to see those updates. And I love the specific things that that staff and the community have suggested we look at, like Hillsborough Online, for example, that's something that I've heard before. So I'm looking forward to these updates. Thanks, Travis.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mark?
Yeah, thanks for, so I'm on board with the timeline and the process. It looks good. You know, I think that I appreciate you sharing the timeline because that was very illustrative of, you know, some of what we've all been through that the we adopted the curriculum, and I don't think it's going to be any secret to say it was controversial because we had a auditorium full of people to discuss it. So and, you know, then we had the holidays, and just as we were starting to try to find common ground between people on both sides of the discussion, we had to stop meeting with people in person. So you know, that there was a lot of probably misinformation in the past couple of months, what I would call, you know, stuff that might not have been completely accurate in the last couple of months. So, you know, getting getting those to the heart of those things sort of has value to me, like understanding. And I appreciate you sharing the Oregon revised statute, the ORS there, and and what our responsibility is, because I think in some cases, and this isn't about an election, I can't imagine running again. So it's just about doing the right thing. it's just about doing the right thing and trying to find the the common ground that we actually have. And I like the list of reduce these behaviors is what our common goals are. And I think almost everyone would agree that those are goals we should have. So we may disagree on how we get there, but I think that we agree that those are the goals. And if we can start where we agree, I think we're on a better footing. So I'm on board with the timeline. I like the process. Thanks for the presentation.
Thanks, Mark.
Jackie, did you raise your hand again or just not?
I did. I just, I wanted to see of other curriculum that we review finally, or however often, is this process similar to that process? Are we consistent in how we review curriculum across the board? Or is this the only one that is falls under that?
This one's the only one that, in my experience, I've seen that there's a rule that describes a board's responsibility to do this. Almost everything else falls under that seven-year cycle where the board or the school, the state Department of Education goes through a process of reviewing publishers and creating a list of recommended curriculum resources, and then districts pattern their cycles off of that. And so this one is different in two ways. The Oregon Department of Education doesn't provide a list of recommended resources, so districts have to engage in a process to create that or curate that together from different pieces. And then there's the two-year cycle of review and update.
Mark, you had another comment?
Yeah, and I appreciate Travis's diplomacy there, and I would suggest a little more strongly that I think that this is an area where the state or Department of Education, OHA, and the legislature might be letting us down a little bit as school districts in Oregon by I think we spent quite a bit of time last time around getting to compliance with the state standards and having community conversations about how those state standards can be best implemented in our community. And the the fact that the the state is not as clear in these kinds of curriculum decisions is making it difficult for curriculum adoptions statewide. It's not just us that has this problem. Curriculum adoptions, and I appreciate you talking about how the CSE integrates with health education overall, that the the integration of those and the, you know, our our goals to try to meet the the state requirements, which I, which to me was the main focus of our efforts last time around. When when the state requirements don't even put us on very solid footing is is somewhat difficult. So I appreciate you sort of indicating that this is an outlier in curriculum, Travis, which I think it is. And in some ways, I would go further where you probably shouldn't say, but that I think that the the state could do more in that regard. So.
Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind everybody that we're going to have a new board and new leadership, and this is a tough issue. So I think we need to be strategic and mindful about how to navigate these issues as a board. You know, and hopefully the new board is a high-functioning board and the relationships come out of this process strengthened rather than challenged.
Thanks, Martin. The only feedback or question that I had, Travis, was I think last time around, especially now that we're just, you know, updating some materials as new resources become available. I think that was something that was highly sought after is just the ability for community members to look at the materials ahead of time or finding whether we have them at the district office or just the ability to look at that information. If we have things that are updated in in this biennial process. And I agree with Mark around the state, helping us a little bit better in our role to implement things that are set standard by the state as well. And so we're we continue to do the best that we can do. And I think I really appreciate maybe highlighting those specific goals, areas where that you mentioned in the beginning, like that is what we're aspiring to and how to keep our kids healthy. And as a, just having my 17-year-old sit through some of the classes and distance learning was amazing and wonderful to be able to have some conversations right after I'm here in the kitchen table and so was she. And so we were able to just have really just a good experience in learning and things that I even learned myself. So I am, I was still really proud of the work that we did in educating our community and making sure that our kids make healthy choices. So I don't see any other hands raised for any additional feedback, but I think you got a lot.
Yeah, thanks for the conversation. Thanks for the support from the board for our leaders to do this work.
Okay, everyone, our next item is our summer programs accelerated learning plan and SIA ASTRFUND update. And I have Travis and Michelle.
Thank you, Erica. Hello, there it is. I'm going to try really hard to focus because I can see our junior board member out of the corner of my eye with Shin, and it's quite a distraction. Beautiful. We've crammed a lot of language into the title of this presentation because so many of those things have tied together under Travis's leadership for instruction and with the budget development process that we're closing up. So we're going to kind of tag team on this presentation moving forward. Please advance. Our agenda tonight, we're going to review our interinterdependent of resources, which has been complicated throughout the pandemic and hopefully we'll have some illustrations tonight that will make that a little bit more clear for you and the community at large. We're going to talk about our engagement focus and accelerated learning approach. What is happening this summer? Is there's a lot going on in Hillsborough and what we're looking at for next school year and then ongoing supports beyond that. Please advance. So first of all, as our planning timeline, and you guys have been a part of this, as we've moved through our our budget development, our proposal of the budget, and our discussions around appropriation levels and the different flavors of funding that is coming to the district. We had an acceleration focus group that really came in and got into some details around a spending plan, given the appropriation level we had set. We have solicited quite a lot of feedback on that, and Travis is going to get into that with you. We have shared our spending plan with both Hillsborough Education Association and Hillsborough Classified United so that they're aware of what next year is going to look like. We have a finalized group as we came back with all of that feedback, and then that's what we're bringing forward to you tonight. And then ongoing, we're going to, of course, be monitoring and adjusting based on the needs of our students as we move into the school year. Please advance. So there's quite a puzzle of regarding our resources as we're looking ahead, and we have worked really hard to understand what's allowable for each type of resource and how they can be used together in order to best serve our students. And so, of course, we have our general fund, our operating budget. We have our student investment account, which going into next year at this time is anticipated to be fully funded. We have high school success, also known as Measure 98, which is targeting our secondary programs. We've had a miracle of summer programming from the state of Oregon. We've been working hard to make sure that those funds can have have a longer lasting impact for students than just a couple of weeks in the summer. We have a lot of federal aid we're going to talk about, and then also even our bond funds have come into play as we've moved throughout the pandemic and are planning for our future. One of the key things that we've tried to do is really separate what's temporary funding versus what's sustainable. And so that's, you know, our general fund is a sustained source over time. Student investment account is looking to be more sustainable, although we don't have a lot of historical evidence of that just yet, and our high school success as well, but all of the rest are fairly temporary in nature. And through our normal budget development process that we do every year, we're going to be working out pilots and transitions and some setting of things that maybe don't serve our students in the highest and best way as we adjust our initiatives alongside of our strategic plan. Please advance. Oh. This is, you all know my gold star slide. I'm super excited about it. Tonight, I can share with you that the legislature has appropriated $9.3 billion. So again, where that arrow lands where we were anticipating it to. You can see that that's well short of the 9.6 billion that we need for current service level at the pre-COVID service level. But thanks to your advocacy, it's better, looks a lot better for us than that original 9.1 that came out of the gate. And so again, you can see how much of the student investment account dollars we're going to need to close that budget gap with the general fund. And then we are going to have just over three and a half million dollars available to invest. Please advance. Here, I'm going to step aside and ask Travis to talk a little bit about our alignment.
Thanks, Michelle. And really, this has become harder and harder as we have different funding sources, like Michelle has shown, and we try to be responsive and reach out to different stakeholder groups on all these different topics. I really appreciate everyone's leadership trying to wrap how we invest money in our students into a cohesive strategy and to monitor goals that all of these dollars are working towards. I want to appreciate Dale and Fran and Adria and their communication with schools and transmitting the needs of schools to these plans and Olga and Francesca, working with stakeholder groups like parents and our special education team, including Elaine, have been working with the parents and families of students who are experiencing disabilities to make sure that the needs of those students are showing up in this budget. So we use asset-based frames when we talk about our students. We align all of our investment strategies with our SIP and strategic plan goals. We make equity-based allocations, understand flexibilities within different grants where some are restricted towards certain outcomes. We we are strategic in how we leverage those resources, targeting the right resources to meet students where they are, monitoring and adjusting as needed. And we'll show in a minute how we're adjusting a little bit our our SIA plan to be responsive and investment in staff and training for improvement, because we know highly-trained staff and culturally responsive strategies are more promising as improving student outcomes than just reducing class size alone. Okay, advance one more, please. Who'll go? This is an example that you'll remember of a prior engagement around around our student investment account dollars. Board members, students working together, leaders in HGA, and then some staff at the central office using monopoly money to try to arrange priorities in the allowable buckets of SIA investment. Please advance one more slide. And so this time, we've gone back to stakeholder groups. We've been allowed until June 30 to make adjustments to our SIA budget as part of our learning acceleration plan, and we've engaged with our Black Village Family Advisory Committee, our family liaison team, Latinx PAC, Native American and Alaska Native PAC, Special Education Family Engagement Nights, Asian and Pacific Islander Family Engagement Nights, leaders from HA and HCU, as well as all the survey data that we got from families and students and teachers this year to inform our adjustment to our SIA plan and to inform our larger strategy around learning acceleration. Please advance one more slide. So the first part of our learning acceleration plan is this summer, we got a big grant, as Michelle alluded to. Right now, we have about 106 different program applications that have been approved for programs running in the summer. We have updated numbers today. We have 290 student interns hired by the city, HSD, Davis Tool, and other companies. And we are expanding our community partnerships to put on incredible programs to reengage students and to help them attain credits as they move forward into the summer. So thank you for everybody who's been involved in that incredible lift. Next slide, please. I'll kick it back to Michelle to talk about our, the specifics of our SIA piece of the plan.
Thank you, Travis. So this is our final proportionality in 2021, when we had completed all of our feedback sessions on the student investment account. We were ready to put this into our budget document. These are the areas that we were, had decided on for spending. We, you can see here that it's fairly split between class size and student health and safety. And at that time, full funding of the student investment account was about 16 and a half million dollars. So that was really, really early on, the pre-pandemic, pre-everything. And there's been a lot of adjustments to that because in 2021, we really only received 30% of that original estimate in funds. Please advance. So this slide is a better description, and we've shared it with you guys before. For the 2021, we can see all of the investments and the priorities for class size and caseload, which is class size reduction on the SIA application, student health and safety definitely took a big swath of resource. But really, the majority of what we were able to fund with a few other adjustments is down in that lower right-hand corner of the slide, the current service level items, because we received just a little bit more than that is 30% of our original allocation for the year. But we wanted to refresh so that you guys could see as we move ahead what the adjustments have been. Please advance. So here is 2122 post-pandemic, reviewing the feedback, adjusting the amount downward, although our student investment account is more than what we receive, actually received in 2021. We are looking at 13 and a half million dollars, which is still $3 million short of that original, original application plan. So given the the adjustment there, the current service level items that we will need to continue to fund from the student investment account, which was the gray portion of the gold star slide that I'm so proud of. The other items here are the investments that we're planning to make using student investment account dollars based on the feedback we have received. Please advance. So this is what our plan looks like for 2122. You can see the colors have adjusted a little bit. The pie on in pictorially is the same size, but really it's shrunk down just a little bit, $3 million, in fact. And then we have our student health and safety, CSL, represents current service level. So that's our, the, what we are funding the current year, moving into next year. And then the darker yellow represents student health and safety items that we are investing in so that you can understand the the color scheme here. Please advance. This is a more detailed description of each one of those buckets, and the buckets are prescribed to us by the Oregon Department of Education as part of our grant application. And so student investment account, Measure 98, and all of these federal funds are paid to the district on a reimbursement basis. They are grants. We apply for them. They have to align with these items. They have to be approved. Then we spend and get reimbursed from the state. So that's how all of these grants are playing out for us. Please advance. So here is a peek at our ASTR. These are the federal funds. And so in Hillsborough, we didn't access any of the ASTR funds passing through the Department of Education in the current year. We were able to be strategic with our our general fund savings. We received quite a lot of CARES federal funds through the county that have offset part of our costs and then also additional funds through the governor's office. They were called GEAR funds targeting comprehensive distance learning. So we've, we've leveraged those items to allow us to focus our federal dollars on 2122 and beyond. So you can see the chart there that for ASTR1 and ASTR2, those are the full allocations to be spent. They will be spent out by the end of 2022 school year. ASTR3, that's just a portion of ASTR3 funds with the remainder available. ESER 3, that's just a portion of ESER 3 funds with the remainder available to us in the next two years before that expires. On the left hand side, we have a pretty comprehensive list of the items that we have identified. That are operational. And then instructional and then student supports. And you can see that because they're federal funds. They're temporary in nature. And so the things that we've identified here are temporary in nature. And we do anticipate that if we don't use all of the grant funds in 2122, that they will carry forward. We will definitely be using ESER 1. And ESER 2 first because they expire before the ESER 3 funds. I think one, one more item to be noted here is that we haven't actually seen the application yet from the Department of Education, Oregon's Department of Education. For the ESER 3 funds, which are the ARP funds. And they're, they're layering on requisites that were not defined. Originally or as prescribeded as ESER 1 and ESER 2. So some of that is still unfolding for us and we're trying to plan for some flexibility there. However, the state does recognize that the student investment account. Feedback and collaborative partnership with the community. Can actually be used to inform the ESER 3 funds and spending as well as we move forward. You can see by my, the clever color coding. That we're moving away from operations and towards instruction. The further we get away from the pandemic. And so that's something to note too, that the expectation of the federal government is that we will be able to focus more of those. Rescue plan dollars on instruction and less on COVID response. Please advance. So beyond 2122. We're developing our vision of success. We're being very strategic about braiding our funds. And Travis, maybe you want to add to this information a little bit too. But I think really planning for sustainability and stability for. Students and staff is going to be critical for us. And all of these plans are based on our current forecast, which is relatively positive for the state. And, and the nation at this point, but things were quite different just one short year ago. So. I think this might be our last slide. Hugo, is this the last one?
The only detail I would add is that the prevailing message from our family and student engagement has been the. Request that we increase investment in social, emotional and mental health and provide more. Tutoring, after school programming, mentorship, culturally specific mentors and ongoing. So. We've really valued the engagement process this winter and spring and we, we feel like. These resources can meet the needs of students and families as we move forward. So just wanted the board to be able to speak to those kind of prevailing themes.
Thank you Hugo. That was the last slide. So happy to answer any questions or take.
Mark's hand is raised.
Sorry, I beat you to the question thing. I assume they were coming. I just want to say that from. My day job, I have sort of a little bit of statewide visibility into some of the summer. Programming and it'll come as no surprise to my colleagues and probably any members of the public who are watching. That the HSD team did an amazing job leveraging our resources. And I would also suggest that in some ways. You know, we have more resources available to us than some municipalities and other school districts have. So you'll rec, even with recognizing that the HSD team has done an amazing job when, when those grant opportunities. Were made available by the governor's office, the HSD team mobilized, got those grant applications in and were able to do a lot of amazing things that you might not see. And every school district in Oregon and every municipality. So the, the HSD team really stepped it up and is doing an amazing job to try to. Do the summer accelerated learning plan. So thank you. Thank you, everybody who was involved in that.
I don't see any other hands. So the only, the, a couple of questions that I had. Was just more information, I think, on the particular items that were listed out, like the Pathway Center pilot, for example. Where would our community members or can we find more information, what that would look like? Those. Detailed items that were bulleted would be helpful. Additionally, I think the touring mentorship and culturally specific programming, I think that has been such a. Amazing partnership with our local nonprofits and because of our, us navigating the pandemic, we haven't been able to like. Do a lot of that meeting in person, but now that our kids are back in the building and we're trying to utilize these funds. To do also, I think catching up our students that fell behind or that need some credit recovery or. Just need some of that mentoring, how? Or when do we see that timeline of bringing that back? Before it's too late, especially with our, our junior seniors, class level and support, making sure that they're back on track. That's one question. And then the other. Was I think more specifically around back to that like credit recovery, which of these accelerated programs are tied back to that versus just COVID response? And utilizing the funds in that way.
I can answer broadly and then ask my teammates to fill in more detail. The first question, Erica, right now we're working on mentorship by recruiting. Older students. Targeting. A diverse group of students to mentor younger students as part of our summer plan. We also have engaged with community partners. To figure out how the after school programming and the summer programming going into the fall will include layers like adelante chicas. So we asked local partners, what's your capacity to provide summer programming or after school programming? And if they said, we don't have the capacity to like run the program, our second question is, can you layer your services into that programming so that students who are there? Have access to chicas as mentors, for example. And so I think your question was, when do we picture that starting up again? And I, I think the answer is now in the summer and then really big in the fall. With those programs that had to really go online for the pandemic. And then the second question you asked was about how. How much of the money is targeted in, in terms of our activities for credit recovery versus just enrichment and engagement? And so there's three phases to our summer program. There's this two weeks right now where high schoolers are attaining credits. And that's two days deep now. And then there's a July chunk where we have our bilingual summer programs. And our ESY are extended school year programs that are really targeted toward our emerging bilinguals, migrant families, dual language schools and students experiencing disabilities. And then in August, we stand up all these different programs. So Audrey just let me know, we have 2,000 kids signed up. And it's not even counting all schools for the, the August summer programs. And I know we have. 1,200, I think, at our bilingual summer program. So we have literally thousands of students involved in summer programming. The high school chunk is intensive and it's quick right now. And then high schoolers are involved in being mentors and interns throughout. As a engagement and credit earning opportunity as well. So I don't know, divvying it up by, by money, Michelle might have a better answer for you.
Yeah, and I think more of my kind of getting to the real question, what, what of these programs we already did, for example, we already. Before, we already did the bilingual summer camp program. But what is it that we're doing additional with these funds? I think that would be helpful just to. Have that clarification, which are add-ons to this year because of this funding that we received.
Audrey, do you want to add in?
Sure, like for bilingual programs, so just, just as an. A note, like in the past, I think we've had about 300 students be able to participate in the past. I believe we're at close to 700 students this time around. So I think what we've done is increased our capability and. It's possible, I know a guy at Hill High, i.e. Mr. James Neville, who runs summer school. And in the past, he's only been able to do what we call kind of like a credit crunch. And this year I think he has quadrupled the number of students that are beginning, coming through their program for credit recovery as well as actual earned credit. So I think. If you look at all, and in the past, we've never done a systematic. School wide, every single elementary school is currently running a summer school. In the past, we, we've never been able to do that. We've been. Able to do bits and pieces, or there's been little grants that have helped us, but to have like a district wide, two week. All about bringing kids into our elementary schools to get them connected, to support with foundational skills, to have some fun enriching opportunities. We've never been able to do that before in this capacity. Like we, we've done, definitely done things, but to be able to do it in all 25 of our elementary schools is pretty actually amazing. And I know it's something we're going to probably never want to lose again. But I think I would say the capacity of all of our schools to serve more students this summer is what's happening. It's really amazing.
I think that one of the things that. Thinking about all the things that we are able to offer this year that we normally isn't an opportunity that our parents know about. I think the communication piece. Is really important how information is getting out to families just about, you know, what can you sign up in June or July or August, what's coming down? So that's something that I particularly would like to see a little bit more about what's our communication strategy for our, for our families so that they know that these opportunities are available.
I appreciate that. And one thing that it would be great if, if everybody on the screen could help communicate is that some of these opportunities are open. Like, like a Parks and Rec class. And some of these opportunities are targeted at students who we know have needed more support in accelerating and. In getting, for example, even like a daily daycare in the summer. And so we, we want to, and Beth made a good video about this, we want to be able to parse out like, what are the open opportunities and to cross advertise with the city and other providers? And then what are the opportunities where our schools are directly recruiting a limited number of students to engage in some intensive programming? So. If y'all could just help tell your neighbors that, it would, it would help us. We're not trying to hide information, but not every program is available for signup.
I just want to add a little bit too, just as a shout out, I appreciated. Mark's comment earlier about the Hillsborough, you know, team is doing these things, but a lot of this lift is happening in our schools with our teachers. With our paraprofessionals that are willing to work just two more weeks, four more weeks, six more weeks. After a very, very long stretch of heavy lift. So definitely want to celebrate those added efforts. I think kind of Erica, to your question about how do people know about this, I think this is also a testimony to. Us saying that we know every student by name, strength and need because we've been in conversations with families, talking to students, getting them connected to what they need. And there are some specific things at the high school, like Audrey was saying, we have credit recovery, learning recovery. But ODE has really made a call out to making learning the standard and timelines flexible. So there's many teachers that are continuing to work with students over the course of the year in a variety of ways, whether that's. Tuesdays from nine to 10 on a Google meets or evenings. I mean, they're really thinking out of the box in order to meet student needs and. I know they've had a lot of effort, as Travis alluded to, hiring some of them, 270 of them to work in. Our summer programs and other areas, which allows for some work credit as well as. Enabling us to tap on the shoulder and reflect with some of our students that they too might come work for HSD. You know, we've. We've said, when we talk about diversifying our workforce, they're sitting in our schools right now, the workforce. Of five to six years is sitting in our schools right now. So being able to reach out to individual students who might not have thought about working for our schools and serving our community and. Giving them this paid intern opportunity with potential credit in the summer is like all the stars of the line for magic. So. We're just really excited for the new things we're able to offer.
Thanks, everyone. So with that, we're going to take a little break, a couple of minutes. We have our. Sessions starting at seven, but we're going to start just at 7:05 to make sure everybody has an opportunity to get something, drink and have a little restroom break and we will be back.
You say something.
We heard you, Mark.
Yep, you're good. All right, I can see people are coming back. Just give you a couple more seconds. Okay, everyone, we are gonna call our. School board of the Hillsborough School Board session into order. And our first item on the agenda, if you would all join me for our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Our next item is our reading of our land acknowledgement. As we gather here today, even in this virtual setting, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Otawatli indigenous people. Lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We thank them and their ancestors for being the original stewards of this land. We take this opportunity to offer gratitude for the opportunity to learn, work and be a community on this land. We also acknowledge that the systemic policies of colonization that have led to genocide, relocation and assimilation. That have impacted indigenous and native families, both past and present, and those who will be affected in the future. According to Kalapua tradition, people have lived here since time immemorial. Indigenous people still live here today, having persevered through US sponsored war displacement, genocide and oppression. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homeland we stand on. The Tolton, Kalapua, Kalamet, Quakamis, Tumwater, Molalla, Banff, the Shidok and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. We believe it is important to acknowledge the ancestors of this place and to recognize that we are here because of the sacrifices, sacrifices forced upon them. And remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native first people community living in the metro area, which includes over 400 tribal nations. Next, we are going to do a recognition and appreciation of two. Groups in our, or participants in our board meeting, our student representatives and our outgoing board members. Mike, you want to kick us off?
All right. Thank you, Erica. I appreciate it. And appreciate this opportunity to give some thanks to some people who provided a lot of service to the community and to our students. And I want to start first with the outgoing student reps and just to give you a thank you. Maya, Ilham and Devlin, we appreciate everything that you have provided. And we do have Devlin with us here this evening. Maya and Ilham were not able to make it. And you all will remember that as a board, having student voice is something that we value. We, we believe that students deserve a say in the policies that affect them and the practices that affect them. And we also believe that students can become more effective learners if they're engaged in the democratic process and the decision making process that are impacting them in their, in their. Student lives. And so for Maya, Ilham and Devlin. We, we want to thank you for sharing your opinions, for being very deliberate in engaging and actively, actively representing your, your peers and the interests that they have. In the school district and the manner in which things are done. And. We, we also want to thank you for giving us an authentic look at the school environment and how the decisions that are made at the board level. Impact students on a day to day basis. But we really believe that your. Participation throughout this entire process and, and this last year helps to hold the adults in the system accountable. And you've, you've acted as agents of social change as we've gone through these, these last 12 months together. And you've represented a diversity of thought and perspective that we otherwise wouldn't have had. One of the things that has impressed me the most about your. One of the things that has impressed me the most about your participation is the manner in which you've listened to all sides before weighing in or before coming to a conclusion yourself. You've been very respectful and forthcoming with your opinions. And it you're you've been passionate about issues. You've been very capable in the manner in which you've shared your views regarding the district and the educational system in general. So I would like to thank you for your service to the district and the community. We do have, I'm just going to hold up a sample here. We do have plaques for each of the student representatives as well as certificates that we will we will be delivering for you and just as a way of thanking you for your service. I would like to give each of the student representatives an opportunity to share any thoughts that they might have. And then following that, we'll have board members have the opportunity to share some thoughts and just comments with the student reps as well. Let me start by just sharing a statement with Ilham. She says she that she sent in, she was not able to be here. She apologizes for not being able to make it tonight. However, does have some things that she would like to share. I've greatly enjoyed my term as a student rep and wish I could continue. It was an amazing experience. I enjoyed working with all of you. Thank you all for dedicating your time and energy for making sure students are well heard in schools. Thank you for listening to what student reps have to say. To the incoming reps, I want to say congratulations and that you will do an amazing job advocating for students. Thank you for this opportunity. I hope we we work together again at some point. I also wanted to share what Maya wanted the board to hear. We did have the opportunity to see her graduate, graduate, which was was fun to have her on stage with us. And Maya says, thank you to everyone on the board for being such amazing leaders and role models. I appreciate the Hillsborough School Districts give students the space to speak and be part of a discussion and the decisions that will affect them in their classmates. Thanks again, Maya. And I know we do have Devlin here with us this evening, so would like to give him the chance to share a few words if he would like to. Devlin?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mike. So I would just like, sorry, okay, sorry. It's a hotel room in Washington DC right now, and it's a little, there's something going on outside. I don't know what it is, but anyway, sorry about that. I just wanted to say thank you very much to the board and to the Hillsborough School District as a whole and for giving me the opportunity of the of this position. I've gotten to meet some really great people and I've gotten some really good insight into how, you know, all the district operations, like how decisions are made and how business is carried out. I also wanted to say that I'm really proud of the everything that I've been able to weigh in on throughout my time here. I also would like to say that I'm I'm a little disappointed that we still haven't been able, this is all through a screen. We haven't been able to meet in person, especially since we thought it was okay. It was okay to send kids to go to school, but we decided not to meet in person for our own safety. I mean, still children under the age of 12 can't get vaccinated, but I still don't really understand why a room full of adults can't sit in person. But this is, sorry, this is harder than I thought it was going to be. I, in the future, I think towards the end, I've kind of noticed that I admittedly have been, I feel like the last time I felt seriously engaged when it comes to school board and business was the school resource officers. I felt like that was the last time that I had the most engagement and felt like that was the last time that I could really weigh in on specific issues. And I felt like more recently I've been showing up to school board meetings and just essentially just giving a few words at the end. I don't feel like I was really providing a ton of input, to be honest. I feel like in the future, more input during school board meetings would be appreciated. At the very least, where that's could be considered relevant, but I I'm sorry, I don't have really for the new school board reps, I know that they're I I know that they're going to do great. Really, that's all I wanted to say. And again, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Mike. Thank you to the to the school board and thank you to everybody in the school district who has been who's helped to make all these meetings happen and has helped support all of us throughout all this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Devlin. I wanted to open up and just to give the school boards an opportunity. If there's anything that you would like to share with our student reps, this would be a great time to do that.
We'll have Lisa and then Martin.
Sorry for the delay. I didn't know if we were just going to go around or if we had to raise hands. So yeah, so I just, I I hope that that Maya and Ilham know that we appreciate their service, even if they're not here to hear our words tonight. And Devlin, I'm so glad that you were able to join us all the way from Washington DC. I bet you're doing something really cool and you probably should have told us what it was and just saying, because I want to know. So I just, I really appreciate, I mean, I can't imagine what it must be like in a year like this year where, you know, you all are doing, trying to to do and engage with school remotely for most of the year and then also have this additional responsibility without that in person support that we normally would would offer. And so this was a very odd year to participate in this in this model. And and I appreciate that I got I got to work closely with with Devlin and with Ilham briefly. And I appreciate getting to know them a little bit. I do, I do miss, you know, we didn't get to go to the conference in Portland together. Usually we do a lot of bonding there and things like that. So we definitely missed the opportunity with the three of you. And and that's something that I think I will regret and feel sad about for quite some time. But I still do appreciate the the times when you all did share with us your feedback. And I I want you to know that your feedback does make a difference and and we hear what you're saying. And that's why we wanted you to be here. So so thank you so much for taking time out of this completely unprecedented year of your high school careers to to spend a little bit of extra time with us. It's something that we appreciate very much. So thanks, guys.
Martin and then Mark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Devlin, you took your duties and responsibilities very seriously, and that was very apparent and and very appreciated. And I just want to encourage you to continue to be involved. You know, you bring a lot to any any organization you choose to associate yourself with will be much richer. So give freely, consider elected office. And, you know, because boards and commissions and legislatures, they need people like you who are going to be all in, come ready to go and be thoughtful and and very considerate of your of other voices. So look forward to seeing what comes next for you, Devlin.
Mark and then Chan.
Second, a lot of what Martin said there and yeah, Devlin, Maya, Ilham, any table you're at is better for you being at the table. So please continue showing up at those tables. Yeah, to Lisa's point, it was great to be able to get coffee with Devlin once safely outside. And and I can I can share with you that I think Maya does appreciate her time on the school board as we sort of sat next to each other at graduation and talked in the tent beforehand. So it was great to get a chance to meet her in person. I wish I had gotten a chance to meet Ilham in person. And I think, you know, but I can share with you that I think she thinks enough of her board service that Ilham has approached the state legislature about having school districts be required to have student representation in some form across the state at all 197. So I believe there's a few school board, student school board representatives who are championing that cause the state legislature and we'll see how that goes in the future. I think we're, I think we're still in the early stages of having student representation. We, this is something we started just in my time on the board, standing on the shoulders of all the predecessors who really thought it was important to do. I was, I'm glad that we were able to get it started. And I think we're still learning what it means to to have to to do our best. And I think having students in the room does make adults want to be at their best, right? So so appreciate that. And, you know, over the course of this learning COVID year, I don't, I don't know that I did my best to help the students be successful. And, you know, like Lisa said, I'll regret that. And but we, and Devlin, you know, I think you're not graduating. I think you'll be with us again next year. Is that right? So, you know, I think you're pretty familiar with the format of our email at this point. So, you know, don't be a stranger.
So I echo just all of the thanks and appreciation for our student reps. The only thing I will add is that I hope you do reach out to us. I hope that even though this year has been challenging and we haven't had opportunities to meet in person, I hope that all of you know that we are an email away, a phone call, a text away. And I'm sure that many people, everyone really on this screen would love to hear from you and would love to just continue building relationships even beyond your service on the board. And so I encourage you to to reach out at any point. If you need a mentor, if you need guidance, you know, whatever it is, I I'm sure that I speak for everyone when I say we would love to hear from you all. So thank you again for just your incredible work and support. And and I I know that this year was challenging, but but we appreciate everything that you did. Thank you.
Well, Chan, Jackie?
Yes, I, there's really nothing I can add except to just say thank you. It's hard to step outside of your comfort zone beyond a board with adults and let alone adults that have the power to make decisions that affect you on a day to day basis. Devlin, I appreciate how honest and forthright and how much grace you showed when when you did speak. It was you have very important things to say, and I don't want you to forget that. Your voice does matter.
Thanks, Jackie. And I think that I definitely agree with all of the sentiments in regard to our student reps. And this is our third year going forward, and it's really inspiring to see the the our previous student board reps also have taken that initiative to to say this is important for all school boards to have on their board, which creates an impact. And I definitely do see, remember Devlin specifically speaking out when we were doing the SRO conversation. And it made us change our approach and making sure that we went back out to our students and get that feedback. And so just a reminder of how powerful even just one person saying something in this space is. And it definitely is a regret from all of us that this year happened to roll out how it did because a lot of our extra activities that we get to do, just being in person and going to our conferences, all that learning really does a lot of bonding with our student reps. And we still appreciate all of the work that they did, even in this pandemic and how we have to run our meetings. But I definitely agree with Jackie, Devlin, especially just the authenticity in your feedback when you have your comments in our spaces. And I just encourage you to always, always keep that because it's it's really genuine and it really helps us also see really what's affecting our students. And it helped us make our decisions and influence us in that way. So thank you to you, Devlin, and to our other school board, student reps, Maya and Ilham. And I'm also thankful that you all even put in time to also talk to our new student reps so that you can also give them some feedback. And I think that tradition is something that I really appreciate about our board, and I hope that it just keeps going.
I know they won't forget. I know that you'll remember that they'll remember, but just in case, recently being a graduation reminded us, Maya had it, you get an extra cord at graduation. So make sure that everybody knows that you get the extra cord at graduation for that.
Thanks, Mark. I'll hand it back to you, Mike.
All right, and Rose did make sure that last year's student reps received those cords as well. So we will keep track of that and make sure you get them. I think everybody is also aware that this is Jackie and Martin's last meeting as a board member. And we want to again extend our sincere appreciation. And I'll start by making a few comments and then I'll give the remaining board a chance to make some comments. And then we will hand the floor over to Jackie and then Martin to share their thoughts once we've all had a chance to chime in. Just just my comments, you both started your service to the Hillsborough School District well before becoming a board member. You you volunteered in other ways, whether it was in the classroom or it was part of the PTA or at your kid's school or part of the budget committee or supporting the drama program or the high school band. You both contributed, you contributed well before before becoming a board member. And you did this because you knew it was going to make a difference for kids. And as you've made a difference for the students of Hillsborough for many years, most recently, your service has been that as a board member. And the thing that I find so impressive about both of you is you've done that without wanting anything back in return. And you've had to make some incredibly difficult decisions in a year that's been very complex and in a difficult environment. And again, you maintained that it was never about personal gain for either of you. You you were on the board with no agenda other than to provide service for our 20,000 students. And when just immediately upon joining the board, you helped to work to pass a bond that when ensure that our students had $408 million of improvements and they would be provided the best learning environment that was absolutely possible for them. You've had a vision and your voice has helped to shape better learning experience for our kids. And for that, we are just eternally grateful. Jackie, as you've participated on the board, you've always been respectful and incredibly thoughtful. I think you read the packet with a fine tooth comb because we always get emails after you read it. So we appreciate the your thoroughness and all of that and all of the questions that you ask. It makes us better. And you've brought a context to board work. And as you started with your kids at the high school level, that was the, that was a perspective that was very helpful for us to see. You've been involved just as a parent in activities and you know the importance of that. You've you've never wavered in your commitment to having high quality experiences for students. And over and over again, you've encouraged us to have thoughtful and deep conversations. And and that's just been helpful for us. We can always count on you to share your thoughts, whether it's a perspective that is similar to the rest of the board or if it's different. You're not afraid to speak up and and have that difficult conversation. So Jackie, thank you for your many contributions to kids and to the community. And we we're just so appreciative of all of the work that you've done. Martin, you describe yourself as a policy wonk. I've heard you say that a number of times and we are, we are thankful for that. You you have a perspective on policy that is different than a lot of people. And I think a lot of that comes from the work that you do in your in your job that you get paid for. The other, you know, one of the, there's so many things I appreciate about you. One of those things is that you're enthusiastic and you're earnest in all things that you do and you weigh topics carefully and deeply and from a variety of different perspectives. One of the things when I think about Martin is once you're in, you are all in. And you go 100%, you go way into the deep end and you will do whatever it takes. And I think that is evidenced by when you're knocking on doors, whether it's for elections or whether it's advocating for the bond, whether it's having conversations about the DEI work or whatever it is, when you're in, you're in and your heart's always in the right place. And you're always interested in collaborating in order to move the work forward. I think that you've provided incredibly strong leadership through challenging situations as well as during celebrations that we've that we've had to that we've got to participate in. And I think one of the things that you bring is clarity after we debate a situation and we engage in decision making and you have a sustained, just a sustained vision of excellence for the district. I want to thank you for being all in and for making the difference for students that you have. We have absolutely appreciated. So thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Martin. And let's say, let's give the other board members an opportunity to weigh in. And then we'll start with Jackie and give you an opportunity to share some thoughts, Jackie, and then we'll finish up with Martin. So board members, anything you would like to add?
Wait, you said we're starting with Jackie, right? And then Martin? Just double checking.
So Jackie? Let's go ahead and go ahead and make comments about both board members. And then we'll give them a chance to wrap things up.
I see. Okay. So let's start, I'll just call on you that way we can move faster, Lisa and then Mark.
Okay, so I thought I was just talking about Jackie, but now I'm talking about Jackie and Martin. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I do. I just want to make sure I do. I don't want to like ignore Martin and be rude. Okay.
Feel free to talk about Jackie and then Martin, and then we can move to the next board member.
Okay, perfect. Um, okay. So this, this, I think, is probably the only benefit of the pandemic is getting to do this meeting, this goodbye meeting remotely, because then we don't have the in-person tension and emotions. And so I think I might not cry, which I'm very excited about. If we were in person, I would have, I think. But and I also thought a lot about what to say. I have obviously so many things to say about both of you. But Jackie, I'll start with you, and I'm gonna try and keep it very short and sweet, and that's that's my plan. So Jackie, I remember the first time that I met you and the impression that you made on me. And I knew right away, this is the kind of person who is going to give work on the board her all. And I was not wrong about that impression. So good job, Lisa. You, you absolutely give your all, your full, wholehearted effort to board service in a way that no board member that I have met in Hillsborough or across the state has done. I know that we can rely on you to read every single word critically and question every single word in every single page, in every single packet, every single month, every single year. Like you just, you are hardcore dedicated. And it's something that I appreciate so much about you. And I also, I feel really proud about the work that we did to encourage the policy overhaul. I feel like that's something that that we specifically accomplished together, and it's something that I I really appreciate more than I can say. So so thank you for also caring about about the dorky things that I care about in terms of policy. I'm gonna miss you so much more than I can say, but I also know, and I mean sincerely, that I feel like I've gained a lifelong friend in bonding over board service. And so I know it's not actually goodbye. And so just you'll have free Tuesday nights, and so I won't for a while. That's okay. And Martin, it's, I mean, again, the same, I have so many things that I could say about you and to you, and I'm gonna try and keep it short and sweet. I also remember the first time that I met you, Martin, but it was earlier and in a different situation. And you too made quite the impression on me. And I remember just feeling overjoyed when you shared that you were going to pursue a spot on the board. I I thought, whoa, lucky us. And I I only hope that we can continue to carry the torch of focus for unincorporated Washington County for you. When you step down, that's not something we're gonna forget. I know that that's new, dear to your heart, and and we'll try and remember that. And I appreciate so much, Martin, your relentless optimism about everything. It is infectious, and I'm gonna miss it so much. I know that you are just an open, kind-hearted person in a way that many other people are not. And you're very forgiving. You give grace more than many people, more than I do, and I appreciate that so much. I also am gonna do my best to pick up the torch for the levy, the local option levy, which is another thing that I know is new and dear to your heart. And I also know, just like with Jackie, this is not goodbye. I know that you're gonna stick around. You're gonna tell us what you think when we're not doing what you would do. So please don't, don't do it too much, but don't, don't forget to do that sometimes. And I I'm also gonna just miss you very, very much. I I was very devastated when you called me and shared that you were not gonna be running again. I know that you remember that conversation. I think that you are on to a great next step in your journey, though, and I and I wish you all the best and I support you in whatever you choose to do next. So thank you both for an unforgettable, amazing four years and also your friendship.
Thanks, Lisa. Next, we're gonna go with Mark. And I'm just gonna say, if anybody starts crying, please just cover the thing so that we don't get any any other, any other triggers here. Go ahead, Mark, and then we'll go to Shan.
That is contagious. And I think if we were filling out yearbooks at the end of the year, I would be elected board member most likely to cry. So yeah, yeah, yeah. So yes, thank you both so much for the years of friendship. And a lot of it is forged in that crucible of a campaign that you just can't describe to people unless they go through it. So, you know, the, for both of you, getting to know you through the campaign was, I I had sort of known you both a little bit before that. Jackie, I don't know if you're, how you tell the story, but Ginny would often say that she encouraged you to run. So, you know, so I don't know if, don't know if that's true or not, but or no, if that was the catalyst, but at least, you know, it's a, it's a part of the backstory. So knowing, knowing you for so long and always appreciated that board service and board work. Having the lens of what we have and the fact that, you know, the fact is, we were sent three banned parents before we were board members, right? So you have to carry that with you sometimes. And so, yes, lifelong friendships, I think that's a given at this point. And everything Mike and Lisa said is true. I don't want to cover the well-tried ground of how detail oriented you are and how much we all appreciate that. And Lisa, your your point about Martin's positivity was one I was hoping to make as well. So thanks for stealing everything, although I suppose it's probably a little bit apropos because Lisa was one of the connections that brought us all together, I think. You know, the the mentorship of of Lisa, we've been lucky enough to have that sort of as one of the common bonds we have. And I I often tell a campaign story about you, Martin. I think you probably heard it before, but, you know, knocking on people's doors and trying to convince them to vote for you was something I never got comfortable with. Did plenty of it, but also like was never something I was comfortable with. And Martin is very comfortable in that. My boss, Representative Solomon, who was a former schoolroom member, very comfortable in that role. And Kyle Allen, City Council Kyle Allen, was kind enough to sort of take us and give us a tutorial on how on how best to do that. And as I was sitting with my frowny face in the corner, Martin said, oh, please, I had three magical conversations on doors today. And all I could think of was, Martin, we live very different lives. I don't think I've had a magical conversation in a decade. So I will miss that so much and look forward to seeing you guys. And I don't know that we need to ensure that you have the format of our email because it was hear from you this way probably by text more frequently. So I almost made it. All right. So I'm gonna be done. Miss you both. The community is better off for you. You haven't served.
Thanks, Mark. And thanks for covering that. I'm lasting as long as I can here. Go ahead, Shan.
All right. Um, I was fortunate and blessed enough to have entered into this board dynamic. And really, it was, it was almost like entering into the Brady Bunch. We were, you guys were like a family, and every single one of you had different personalities and different strengths that you brought to the table. And so I am so, so blessed that my first two years of board service was with this family. And I so appreciate what I have personally learned and the friendships that I've gained from both Jackie and Martin. And so thank you both for, for for being yourselves, for forgiving of yourselves to our board, to our district, to our community at large, and for showing me and really mentoring me on how to be a good advocate for our students and for our community. Jackie, I will start with you. You are such a person of conviction. And what I have learned from you is really how to listen. And through listening, that is how you ask your questions, and that is how you get to the heart of the matter. And that has been such an important piece that I have learned from you in just witnessing how you go about your engagement with the community, your engagement with students, your engagement with parents, even during board meetings and and work sessions. The way that you ask questions is by far one of the biggest important lessons that I think I have learned from you. So thank you so much for for being a person of conviction and truly leading with your heart in that. And Martin, you are a man of principle, and I think I knew that from day one. And even as you are exiting your board, boardsmanship, I I think that it still reigns true that you are such a man of principle. What you have shown me is really how to acknowledge every person in the room, whether that when we were in person, it was you going around and saying hello and shaking hands with everyone. And you also consider who's not in the room and who should be in the room. And so I just so appreciate that you are a man of principle and that that is the lasting impression that you have made on me. So I appreciate that so much. One of the first, I think, coffee meetings that I had with you was 7:00 AM, 7:00 AM at Insomnia Coffee Shop. And you brought the, you brought the the district budget book. And I remember you just taking me under your wing and just showing me and walking me through how to read that. And this is before I even stepped foot on the board. And so I just so appreciate the way that you personally have mentored me. And you both have truly shown me what it means to be a good board member and a great board member. And you are certainly going to be missed. This family dynamic is not going to be the same without you both. But like everyone has said, I know that that our friendship isn't going to end here, and it's just going to, you know, extend beyond the the little cubes that we see in front of us. So thank you so much, both of you, and you both will be so missed.
And Shan, okay, I'll try to keep it together here because I do have to run the rest of the meeting. But I think one of the things that I just wanted to mention to everybody that's listening is even though Jackie and Martin are no longer gonna be on our board, they're still such amazing members of our community. And if anybody's interested in serving on the board, reach out to them now that they have extra time. I am so sure that they are happy to sit down with anyone and talk about what board work is like, what you can expect, especially now that they won't be on the board. They can really, you know, talk really freely about all of our, you know, all of our process of ups and downs and really mentor individuals that are looking towards maybe possibly serving. I know that they're for incoming board members. I'm really excited for them also to be able to see our, our board and the effectiveness that we've been able to run with because of the members here of our HSD family here that we're we're calling it now. And also just thinking about the the gaps in the areas that you all, everybody has mentioned, all the just unique and amazing qualities that Jackie and Martin brought to our board to really bolster us up and and cover all these areas. And so we're really going to miss those, and we're gonna, you know, have to make sure that we're covering all those angles and and areas that you all did such a great job at doing that. I won't repeat because everybody already said. I think that just thinking about Jackie, I think one of the things that I really appreciate, especially a lot of people, you know, think that we are, we, I think we're all friends now. Outside of this, we've kind of been forged by fire in serving on the board and developed these really deep relationships. But it's also like a family. So, you know, we we don't, it's all not a rubber stamp. We get into really, you know, good arguments and discussions about different topics. And that just enriches our board service and our work. And, you know, it's it's almost like siblings, I think, where you fight with each other, and then afterwards you make up, and then you're, you know, back to our unit and and doing what we need to do. But we always come back in the service of our students, and that's what we all centered. I think that beyond having that connection of, you know, Lisa, I think all of us really center on and having common, looking at serving at our student and looking and centering on what they need to be successful in our district. And I so appreciate that we can all align ourselves on that. I also think the other thing I just wanted to mention to that comes to my mind with Martin, I just think like iron sharpens iron, Martin. You have helped me. Like, I'll get it. You have helped me immensely this year, and I'll be really grateful for that. And you have taught me that every person and every perspective has value. And I think you taught us to all of us, and I'm really grateful for that. So I'm gonna end it there, but I can hold it together for the rest of the meeting. But thank you so much to all, to both of you, and we will miss you. But we'll see you later.
All right. Thank, thank you all for sharing your thoughts. Obviously, really deep appreciation from all of us that have had the chance to work with you. And just as a reminder, one of the things that we do is we do have a traditional gift that we will be delivering to the outgoing board members, and that is an engraved school bell. So that will be coming to a home near you. And that's just our way of having something for you to have around to remember your service with the board and the deep relationships that you've built. All right, Jackie, you ready? We're going to start with you and just have you say a few words. So Jackie?
Okay, I'll see if I can make it through this. I I want to thank everyone for your kind words. I really took them to heart. I had to write this down because otherwise I would lose my train of thought. So there's so much I want to say, so much I should say, and a lot that I shouldn't say. Over the last four years, I've been challenged, I've been uncomfortable, I've been celebrated, and I've been confronted. And it was all worth it when I look at where our district is today compared to where it was four years ago. I could not be any prouder to have been part of that process, especially with every single one of you. I will take with me many lessons, and I want to share a few of those. Everyone has something to teach us if we're open to it. Be humble enough to admit when you've made a mistake, own it and learn from it. Words can have unintended consequences. Growth only happens when you sit in, when you can sit in and accept your uncomfortableness. If there's someone hired to do a job, then it's not your job. Your job is to ask the questions. Specifically, I have learned from Erica. Those who are quiet are also those you can learn the most from. Martin, the art of ensuring everyone is welcome and included. Darn it. Mark, that we can always find common ground on polarizing issues if we look hard enough, and life is a constant learning environment. Shan, I have learned thoughtfulness in everything you do and everything you say. And Yadira, I learned how to have grace and patience. Lisa, I learned to follow your gut and stand behind your convictions. And Mike, from you, I learned humility. I will take this experience and continue my journey because every ending is also a beginning. To our new board, I leave you with a quote from Michelle Obama. Make decisions based on hope and possibility. Make decisions based on what should happen, not what shouldn't.
All right, Martin, you want to share a few words?
Wow. Thank you for everything that's been said. I I prepared this in advance, and it seems so inadequate at the moment, but I'll, I'll try to get through it. First of all, just to Jackie, I too remember the first time that we met. Oddly enough, Jackie, not surprisingly enough, was early to a a board meeting. Oddly enough, Jackie, not surprisingly enough, was early to a, a board meeting. And, and I came in and there was two people in a big empty board meeting room. And I walked over and sat right next to her, this giant empty room, and struck up a conversation. And we quickly realized we were both running for the board and we sort of tried to gauge whether we were going to run free against each other. And in that early conversation, I decided, okay, I'm not going to run against Jackie. And then we went from there and, and that was a wonderful first meeting, Jackie. And I was profoundly impressed from that very first conversation. And can continue to be to this day. To my prepared comments, my deepest appreciation to the voters of this community who selected and trusted me with this responsibility. And especially to all those who helped me in my campaign some four years ago. Especially Ms. Annette, Ms. Megan and Ms. Rose, my wife, daughter and granddaughter, respectively. One of my favorite pictures from that experience was a picture of little Rose in a stroller and our three heads right tucked in behind her with our campaign lit and going door to door. It was, it was so much fun. And just as, as a note, we wouldn't have a democracy without candidates, differing views and voter decisions. It's terrifying to run, but also thrilling, exhausting and rewarding too. We need members of the HS, HSD community to be willing to run and serve. And I salute everyone who takes that step. And I truly want to emphasize everyone who takes that step. Here's a quick primer, I'm speaking now to people who might be listening that are thinking about running. Here's a quick primer on how I made myself ready to campaign and serve. I brought my whole self to the effort. Before I ran, I was, had a career in the Air Force, including serving at the Pentagon. So I kind of knew how big organizations make big decisions. And I'm a veteran. I think I'm the only one on the board who's a veteran and I, and I bring that lens to all of our decisions. I worked on two different local governments and I had a lot of community volunteer and service in boards and in ways beyond K-12. And, and I brought all that community experience to my, my time on the board. And I'm a grandparent. I believe I'm the only grandparent on the board. I began with HSD at my daughter's Bartonet Creek Elementary School. There I said it, everybody knew I would. Parent Teacher Club in 2005. And I, I served as treasurer and vice president and then went on to volunteer in district ways after that, beginning with the 2006 Capital Bond Campaign that constructed several of our newer schools, including Rosedale, where my granddaughter just concluded, completed a fabulously successful kindergarten year, even in the pandemic. And I've remained in, engaged with HSD ever since. Continuing with the 2006 Bond Oversight Committee, Curriculum Advisory Committee, Budget Committee, and then the 2017 Capital Bond Exploratory Committee. All that before I ran for the board. So I made myself ready for the challenges of board work. And I would encourage everybody who, who, who's contemplating serving on this board or any board to make yourself ready. Present to the voters, somebody who is a good option and will serve well. Speaking of campaigns, I was on about a thousand doors in my campaign and another thousand for the Capital Bond. And I kept up that community engagement throughout, throughout my time on the board in a lot of different ways, and I loved every single second of it all. The Proud to Be HSD festivals, Hillsborough's Latino Festival, Farmer's Markets, Beth's Orenko Back to School Events, Dia de las Niños tents, Optimist meetings, Rotary meetings, Elks meetings, all three of our city council meetings, the Central Cultural Gala, Chamber of Commerce, Crystal Apple Awards, Capital Bond engagements, State of the City Addresses, meetings with legislators, even testimony in Salem before committees in many, many, many OSBA events, including dozens of coffees and maybe a few beers with constituents, not all of whom agreed with me, but all of those experiences were enjoyable and worthwhile. All that stuff was fun and useful. And I felt like it made a difference for HSD and ultimately for our students. And that made all that investment of time and effort worthwhile. And I loved all the HSD events, the superintendent coffee chats, the retirements where each year we lose thousands of years of, of educational service. It's just an amazing thing to, to sit through a retirement ceremony for HSD and realize the talent that we have in this district. And on the other end of the spectrum, attending the new employee orientations and, and getting a chance to speak there. Val's and Sal's luncheons, faith luncheons, open houses, bond site visits, ribbon cuttings, and of course District Committee, Bond Work, Budget Committee, Audit Committee, Long Range Planning Committee, Two Contract Negotiations, and the Advocacy Committee. And also serving on the Bond PAC with all my colleagues. This board at the time was very unique in that we all rolled up our sleeves and became volunteers, took our board hat off and became champions of the district and engaged to pass the 2017 Capital Bond. And that's a lifetime accomplishment for me. The significance of that bond will last long, long, long past my time on the board. So why did I run? I ran really for three specific reasons. To end the gender discrimination at our school-based health center, to pass the Capital Bond and to try to achieve stable and adequate funding for, for the Hillsborough School District. But more generally to serve and champion our schools in the community. And it's worth noting that our respective time and each of our respective roles, whether we're on the staff or the administration or in board service is so short. I'm reminded right now just how fleeting this opportunity was. I tried to make the most of every moment and every opportunity. So how did I do? Well, the school-based health center was a quick fix. It turns out all we had to do was just comply with state law. And that was pretty straightforward work once we had the focus on the issues. The bond was a tougher lift, but the community responded, passing two to one. Just an incredible, incredible bonding experience there, not in a, in a campaign effort for me as an individual, but as a campaign on behalf of the district, nonpartisan. All, all, all walks of life got behind that bond and, and it took a lot of work, but we did the work and we got the results that we needed. And, and what a satisfying experience. Stable and adequate funding, that's a tougher nut to crack. Of those three goals, I give myself partial success on stable and adequate funding. We got behind the Student Success Act, and again, that was a heavy lift. We engaged with the community, we, we spoke to parent teacher clubs. We spoke to civic groups. We were very public as board members in, in generating community support for that statewide effort. And we did achieve success with the Student Success Act, but has it resulted in stable and adequate funding? From the work session and Michelle's briefing earlier, I think the answer is no. So there's more work to do and I'll have a little bit to say about that in a minute. But some of the other things that I look back on is particularly satisfying. The comprehensive sexuality education. We, we, we tackled that very difficult issue in a very transparent and forthright and candid way. And I feel very, very good about the work that we did and the outcome that we achieved. And to me, that's a an outcome that I, I will take with me for the rest of my life is very satisfying. Similarly, the work we've done as a board, supporting the district, supporting Mike, supporting the district in all things equity, diversity and inclusion. Such important work. I believe it's existential for every local government, whether it's a K-12 or a city or a county or a fire district, that the staff of that public entity reflect the community that they serve. And through that lens, we have work to do. We've made tremendous progress. You'll hear a little later on that under Mike's leadership in his time as superintendent, we've doubled the diversity of our staff. But there's so much work to do. I, I'm satisfying with the work we've done in that area, but, but I also look forward to passing the baton to this next board to continue that work and accelerate that work. And move the goal, move the, move the ball closer to the goal of the day when our district truly reflects the students and the community that we serve. And also another big win was our look at the School Resource Officer Program. There were voices in the community that wanted to just throw it out. Maybe I was even a part of that, to be honest. But what was, we took a thoughtful and detailed and intentional look at that. We came away, to my surprise, with a renewed commitment to that program. We refreshed all the policy and guidance and refreshed our relationships with our key partners, most specifically the City of Hillsborough Police and the Washington County Sheriff's Office. And I feel great about the SR program that we have right now in this district. It meets the needs of our student and our community and it's, it's the right thing. And I'm very proud to champion the SR program that we have. Again, that was a very satisfying work. So those things all come to mind as particularly consequential and satisfying. But so many other important things as well. Every agenda was packed. It was typically two to 300 pages of, of prep work and every, every item. And as Jackie pointed out, really every word was consequential and, and I did my best. And I know all my colleagues did. I can tell the public who are listening, all of my colleagues always came prepared for the meeting. And if you watch a lot of public agencies do business, I, I don't think you can say that about all of the elected representatives all the time. But I can say that about your directors on the Hillsborough School District. Very proud of the work that each of you have done. I salute the district, all the departments and by my count, there's 16 different departments in the administration. They're all superbly led and staffed with people who care, tremendously competent, selfless, dedicated education professionals, serving at the, at the district and the administration. The cabinet in particular, I had a one-on-one relationship with each of you and I would love to call you out by name, but I just cannot. But each of you know that I have special memories of each of you, typically through the panels that you ran or some of the policy questions I asked. And, and those were very satisfying and informative. You taught me so much. Our building administrators, throughout the buildings, the buildings are full of top talent at the administrator level, the principals and also all the staff classified and licensed. This district, top to bottom, is top talent. And I can say that, having been in every building and met with most of the administrators and spent four years taking a critical look at, at our operations. And I come away hugely impressed, very confident and optimistic. Shout out to our unions in particular. They are respected voices for our staff. The Hillsborough Education Association, especially their leader Jill. The Hillsborough Classified United and especially Melody and Devlin before her. I, I respect the work that you do and I respect the voices that you champion. And it was a pleasure to work with you in this last four years. I don't want to single out anybody, but as I reflect back on my four years, I, I just want to give a special shout out to our student services and especially the special education students and families they serve. Such important and upon reflection, underappreciated work. Thank you all so very much. To our critics, I invite any of you to attend the recurring Special Education, Parent and Partnership Meetings and experience firsthand how talented and engaged our magnificent staff are in such a challenging aspect of our district service delivery. It's amazing. And they're representative of the work happening all across our district in every aspect of our K-12 service delivery. I mentioned the buildings, I, I made a point to get into all of them and I did. And I met with all the principals until the pandemic. And then I just didn't get a chance to meet all of our new principals or the principals who moved into new buildings. And I, and I regret that, but that was just a reality of the pandemic. You all are doing great work and the time I spent with you enriched me so much and grounded me in what's happening in the buildings in such a useful and insightful way. And I'm grateful to the time each of the principals spent with me. To my colleagues on the board, first of all, a shout out to now eight student reps I've worked with, they've all represent a bright future. And it was a joy to work and get to know each of you. And it's getting hard. To my elected colleagues, I want to begin with Lisa. I'm working out in the sweat thinking about that coffee meeting we had in Insomnia. And not the one in Hillsborough, it was the one over in Tannisborne, where we had those conversations that changed my life. That was a conversation that changed my life, Lisa, and I'm I'm profoundly grateful. Yadira and Sheen, it's been such a joy to get to know you and work with you. Your voices in particular are so important. And I hang on every word that you say. And so I appreciate you when you speak out and add your voice to the, to the three that came in with me as a cohort, who knew how fast those four years would come and go. Mark, Jackie and Erica. I also want to give a shout out to Wayne and Kim, my former colleagues on the board. They set the bar high for excellence in board service. And I tried my best to emulate the work that they did. And looking forward, this district is going to be exceptionally well-served by Nancy and Monique. Indeed, the wisdom of the voters have selected perhaps the most diverse board in the state, if not the nation. And, and the voters' wisdom is reflected in this incoming board. And it's going to be exciting to see the work that they do. Special shout out to Rose and Kathy and Val before them. Thank you very, very much for the calls, the texts, the general nudges, the kindness and grace as you cater to the various schedules and availability and last minute calls. How do I log on? Thank you. To my sister Erica, it's been a pleasure to serve with you these last two years. You're an amazing leader. I have learned so much and I've enjoyed every second being in leadership with you and supporting you in any way I possibly could. You're a tremendous leader and I respect you so much. And Mike, I'm going to, I'm going to qualify this with reminding everybody that I'm a veteran, so I'm just going to call you General Scott. If you'd chosen to serve in the military, you would be a general. Looking ahead, an amazingly diverse board coming in. Their challenge will be the Holy Grail of K-12 in Oregon, stable and adequate funding. HSD has managed to achieve 87% graduation rate. And there's so much more to stable and adequate funding. But if you just boil it down to one number, for a quick conversation with a thousand voters on their front doorstep, you can talk about graduation rates. HSD is exemplary and it's 87%, but let's face it, 13% aren't getting across the finish line. We're significantly better than the state, which is 82%. The budget that Michelle briefed us is 9.3 billion. That's a lot of money, but frankly, it's a cut budget for HSD. The state at 9.3 billion does not fund the quality education model, which is the state's own estimate of what it takes to provide a quality education for every student in the state of Oregon. In my humble opinion, the state will never fund K-12 sufficiently to achieve 100% graduation. So what does that mean for us as a board and what does that mean for us as a community? I think we have to take stable, adequate funding into our own hands and, and ask the community for a local option levy. That will be for the next board to decide. I've met with all of our legislators, well, prior to this last round. At one point in time, I could say I'd met them all, but that's not true at the moment. There's a few folks that I have not met since they took office. But honestly, and I love them all, they're all great people. I absolutely love our legislators. But the state collectively is funding the state at 82% graduation rate. And that's not going to fund what the investment we need to get that last 13%. The last 13% of our, of our students are going to be more expensive than the first 87%. Programs like Pathways, they cost a little bit more money. So again, a conversation about how are we going to fund, what we need to do to get to 100% graduation rate. I'm skeptical about the state stepping up, so we have to have that conversation ourselves. I, I asked this incoming board to take a hard look at that issue and engage when the time is right. I asked this incoming board to take a hard look at that issue and engage when the time is right. And this board, this next board, you will know when the time is right to ask the community. And I will be keying off of you. As one member of the community, I will be keying off of all seven of you incoming board members to tell me when the time is right, and then I'll get behind that ask as a member of the committee. Finally, you all must know that I'm always proud to be HSD. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Jackie, for your amazing work and dedication to our district and our community. It's hard to move on from that, but we will attempt to. We still, like Martin said, our agendas are always packed. We come to do a lot of work on our board meeting. And it wouldn't be anything else than this on your last four meetings for us to continue doing this amazing work for our community. So our next item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda, and I'm looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
So it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Martin. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are we just going to do roll call? Rose, I'm looking to make sure.
Sure. Lisa Allen.
I.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
Jackie Spross.
I.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Sheen, Kim.
I.
Erica Lopez.
I. The motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is audience time, and I will hand it off to Beth to see if there's any audience.
We had two requests to address the board, one of whom is Joe Everton, and he has asked to be elevated from a participant to a panelist for the purpose of delivering his comments. So if I can ask our tech folks to do that. And the other was Katie Miranda, who simply wanted a statement provided to the board that they could read at a later time. And that statement has already been posted to your board area of the Google Drive. So I will let you read your disclaimer while we get Joe prepared to speak.
Thank you, Beth. The public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent-to-speak card available at the top of the HSD webpage and submit it via the Google form to the executive assistant to the Board of Directors, Rose Roman. Comments concerning a published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda, unless otherwise authorized by the board. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard at this time. Commenters should include their name, and if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Up to three minutes of the board discretion will be allowed for an individual comment. Commenters may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include Board Policy KL Public Complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. The board thanks all visitors and their presence and appreciates the input of community members. I think I do see Joe on here. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. I'm Joe Everton. First of all, I didn't choose this spot on the agenda, just so you know. But first, congrats to the new board. That was an exciting election. And also, second, I wanted to call out, thank you, Jackie. Thinking back, more than any other board member, you took initiative to reach out to me individually, someone who didn't always agree with you on everything, and I applaud this practice. And I hope the new board will do that, too, when you more of that. I wanted to speak tonight about the biennial CSC review process. It's only just started at the CCAC, and there's some room for improvement there. I'm not going to get bogged down in the details. They're going to skip some concerns about this first meeting and focus on the big picture. Some of these things I wrote before the working session earlier today, but I've made some adjustments. But it's not all fully informed by what you said earlier. So we all know this is a flashpoint issue, and I heard this acknowledged by some in the working session. Some of you even said today that you were proud of how you handled the adoption. And I still suggest that you can do, we can do better this time. I encourage this board to adopt or strengthen a few principles in their review this time. One, transparency. First, review public meeting laws. Boards subcommittees are subject to them to spell out the process for the public. The working session was a good start, but until two weeks ago, I assumed that the CCAC wasn't even going to review CSC this time around because the process hadn't even been made public, even to the committee. Number two, engagement. Solicit feedback from all perspectives in the community, not just experts. Do it early, so it's intentional rather than reactional, and take the time to get it right. 30 days was not enough time last time. I do not see why it would be enough this time, especially if emails to the board members is still how engagement's done. Wishing for the state to dictate CSC curriculum is the opposite of engaging with your community to get this right. You were elected to engage and serve this whole community. Even those who disagree with, please take the opportunity. Three, inclusion. Seek a better compromise, at least no party shopping for private schools, or wishing it could afford to. And if the 2019 adoption was about inclusion, we would not have had the voting results like we did last month. Four, fix the opt-out. I still hear educators saying, you know, you can opt out, right? The opt-out is broken. Many parents who use it know this, and the administration needs to acknowledge this and fix it. Kids are presented material against their parents, submitted opt-out often. There needs to be accountability here. Finally, I want to touch on the CCAC's fitness for the purpose of CSC review. I still maintain that the CCAC cannot give these materials a proper review. In 2019, they spent an hour and a half tops with the actual material. The parents who had concerns spent tens of hours going through it in school offices to catalog their concerns and more time on top of that, trying to communicate it through email. Do you remember how frantic that month was for you? Nobody can do this all in 30 days. We need parents from all perspectives included in this review, and especially parents who are willing to go through the material completely. The CCAC, as it is appointed and run today, is not that. This committee doesn't have the time to cover it at all. For better results, either make adjustments to the CCAC or appoint a committee with a different model so that all parents are properly engaged. Just one last thing here. Again, I do not see how this can be done well with just three days of community review if the input is not taken from all sides during the development. The upset parents of 2019 were not asking you to vote down CSC. They were asking you to take the time to gather feedback and get it right. Let's get it right this time. That is my two cents adjusted for inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and I'm looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
So it has been moved by Lisa Allen and seconded by Sheen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call?
Lisa Allen.
I.
Sheen, Kim.
I.
Erica Lopez.
I.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Jackie Spross.
I.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
The motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is we're going to recess our board meeting, and we are convening our local contract review board. Our first item on here is a declaration of emergency replacement of exhaust system in science classrooms at Hillsborough High School and exemption from competitive bidding with Adam Stewart.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay, good. Yes, we have a project that has come up at Hill High in some of our newly remodeled classrooms. A portion of the project that we didn't do this summer or this past year was the replacement of this exhaust system. And it's become apparent over the last couple of months that this is going to need to be done, and it needs to be done this summer. And given the timing, we just don't have the time to design the system, hire a contractor, purchase all the things we need, and get the work done prior to the start of the school year. So we're asking for this emergency exemption to allow us to go directly to a design-build contractor to get this work done this summer. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Don't see any questions or hands raised for you, Adam. Do we have any public testimony? Oh, sorry, actually. Before I jump there, let me, if I don't have any questions from board member, I'm looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors, acting in the capacity of the local contract review board, declare an emergency and exemption from competitive bidding requirements for replacement of exhaust system in the science classrooms at Hillsborough High School prior to the start of the 2021-22 school year.
I'll second.
So it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Lisa. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call?
Lisa Allen.
I.
Sheen, Kim.
I.
Erica Lopez.
I.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Jackie Spross.
I.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
The motion carries. Is there any public?
Did I say one last thing before we go?
Yes.
Just, I want to offer my congratulations to Mark and Jackie and a big thank you to both of them for a lot of reasons, but especially for all the work that they did and the rest of the board did on the bond. I mean, we wouldn't be doing all this cool stuff if it hadn't been for the work that those two and the rest of you and a whole lot of other folks put into this. So thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Do we have any public testimony? No, okay. We are adjourning our meeting of the local contract review board and reconvening our board meeting. Our next item is our budget hearing, and that's with Michelle and I. Michelle, do you want to say anything before I do my reading?
I don't think so. This is a technical part of our budget development process, and this action item has been on the calendar for quite a while. So I think it's expected. Thank you, Erica.
Michelle, okay. This is the final public hearing prior to the board adoption of the 2021-22 budget document, which the Budget Committee approved on April 26, 2021. This is a time for public testimony. The board will have an opportunity for questions and comments during the action items portion of the agenda. Any patron who wishes to speak should complete an intent-to-speak form located at the top of the HSD website and submitted to the executive assistant to the board, Rose Roman, at roman@hsd.k12.or.us. I am declaring the hearing open. Is there any public testimony? Okay. Hearing none, I declare the hearing closed. I just wanted to acknowledge before I close our, I see our budget committee members on here, and I thank you for your participation in this process and for joining us today. So we are adjourning our budget hearing and reconvening our board meeting. Our next item on the agenda, our action items, is to adopt the resolution to adopt the 2021-22 budget, appropriate the 21-22 budget, and impose 2021-22 taxes and categorize the levy. Michelle, did you want to kick us off?
Sure, thank you. As you can see, there are three resolutions that come at this point for our budget adoption, and they're all in the board packet, as well as the approved budget document. And so any questions or comments? And happy to take those about this process. Also, a great big thank you to Jeff Jones. Worked very hard to put this budget document together, and there's a lot of additional information in this one to make, increase our accountability and transparency around how we use our resources. So a big shout out to him, and that is all.
Thanks, Michelle. Fellow board members, I'm looking for a motion.
I just need to read this one. I can't do it from memory. Okay, I move that the Board of Directors adopt the resolutions to adopt the 2021-22 budget and impose 2021-22 taxes and categorize the levy as shown in the June 22, 2021 board meeting packet.
Second.
Target.
So it has been moved by Lisa, and I heard Jackie second. First. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call, please?
Lisa Allen. Martin Granum.
Aye.
Sheen, Kim. Charlie. Erica Lopez.
I.
Jackie Spross.
I.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
The motion passes. The next item that we have is to adjust our appropriations with Michelle.
Thank you, Erica. This is the other side of budget development, where we take a measure of our guidelines that we set in the budget and our actual spending to date and make some adjustments so that we are within our budget appropriations for the year, and we'll pass our audit testing in that area. So we, all of the adjustments are listed out here in the situation page. They're really related to CARES funds that came through Washington County and the governor's office. And we did discuss those earlier in terms of leveraging some of our additional expenses during the pandemic period. So happy to answer any questions you might have about our adjustments.
Don't see any hands raised, so I'm looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the adjusted appropriations for general and special revenue funds listed in the June 22, 2021 board meeting packet.
I'll second.
So it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Lisa. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call?
Lisa Allen.
I, I, sorry, I was on the wrong tab. I could, I apologize. Like, yes.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Sheen, Kim.
I.
Erica Lopez.
I.
Jackie Spross.
I.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. The next item that we have is authorization of after-school program requests for proposal and advanced award with Travis and Michelle.
Thank you, Erica. Michelle, do you mind if I kick off and provide the context? All right, so we figured that this one needed a little more explanation just because it's a growing partnership with the City of Hillsborough, and it's part of our learning acceleration plan. We talked about and it's part of our learning acceleration plan. We talked about earlier. Based on feedback from the community, we've decided to invest a little more heavily in after-school programs, especially at our elementary schools where we have 50% or greater free and reduced lunch. So, Google, if you could go one more slide. Starting with why, we've heard community voices during the SIA process asking for extended learning time and after-school programming as well as information from our PACs indicating that we need extended learning time, mentorship, tutoring and academic supports. We have partnerships strengthening through COVID-19, for example, with the City of Hillsborough and Champions After-School Programs. We have resources coming to us that could accomplish this, including ARPA and ESAR dollars and full funding of SIA. We also have the Hillsborough City Council expressing a desire to expand access to after-school programming and childcare as per their council priorities for this year. One more slide, please. So we've been using this map to plan how to strategically invest in schools where this demand is the greatest. And you can see the, the eight little red dots represent sites where we are planning to partner with a provider and expand after-school programming. And then other schools would also maintain partnerships they have with Vermont Hills, YMCA, et cetera, and create programming for students per the demand at their campuses. Please advance one more slide. The goals would be to provide extended learning and after-school care at each elementary school. We would have sustainable partnerships over time, beginning with this infusion of resources in the next three years. We would target title schools and schools where there are students with 50% or greater qualification for free and reduced lunch and subsidize up to 45 slots at each of those schools. And then schools with less than 50% free and reduced lunch would continue to provide after-school programs with a sliding scale for tuition and scholarships. Each of the programs would have a director at each school to embed the practices of the staff. They would attend staff meetings. They would meet with teachers and students and extend what happens during the school day into after-school academically, socially, emotional, learning, et cetera. Examples of the, of, of programs that do that already are Boys and Girls Club and Champions. Go ahead and advance one more slide, please. And the current proposals on the table are a three-way partnership between HSD, City of Hillsborough, and after-school providers. We would fund for three years collectively out of ESAR, ARPA, SIA and provider scholarships. The programs at the subsidized schools would go from 2:00 to 7:00 PM daily and serve meals. We would have a program director at each of 10 sites to interface with the principal, teachers and students. We'd have eight schools at that level, fully subsidized with 45 slots equalling 360 students served. Plus, we're looking at a program expansion of Boys and Girls at two sites per our original SIA proposal. And that brings us to tonight's RFP process to seek those partners.
Thank you, Travis. Oh, yeah.
Travis, would you like me to take it back to the situation page and a description of the RFP and advance award?
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so similar to the process that we did, it's kind of a pre-authorization process due to the timeline. This is accelerated, although it doesn't necessarily meet emergency sourcing for the district. So what we're asking the boards to consider is authorizing us to do, to go out with the RFP, request for proposals, collect that information and then go ahead and award contracts to the providers that filter through and score high on our proposal and interview review. It's time sensitive in order for them to staff up and be available in our sites at the beginning of the school year. So our situation page has the timeline just detailed out and the proposers that successfully participated in our recent summer childcare, they, they have the ability to submit to us just an abbreviated proposal based on after-school services, that scope of work, because we already have a lot of very current information about their organizations. So I'm happy to answer any questions there are about this process.
Don't see any hand raised. The only question that I had that I didn't see on the, here was just on the evaluation criteria. Are we, I know that one of the things that we're trying to, I think I asked earlier in our after-school was about culturally responsive programming. And so is that part of our criteria in selecting vendors that that either meet that criteria or have additional points assigned to them because they are providing that service?
Yes, Erica, that is a part of our, our lens and our scoring as well. And we did provide a board update with the intent to award for summer services. And you can see the results of that and who we're working with over summer. So we are definitely able to provide additional information. If, if you'd like to see the matrix that we're using to score both the proposals and the interviews.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Travis. I don't see any additional hands raised on here. So, board members, I am looking for a motion.
I'll do this one, too. Let me, all right, I move that the Board of Directors authorize the after-school program request for proposals and advance award of service contracts to organizations qualified through the request for proposal process.
Okay, so it has been moved by Lisa and seconded by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Jean Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Jackie Spross.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle and Travis. Our next item on the agenda is, sorry about my place here, Healthy and Safe Schools Plan with Casey Walteach.
Good evening. As you recall, back in 2017, the legislature passed SB 1062 that required every school district to submit a healthy and safe schools plan by July 1, 2020. We did submit last year, and if you guys recall, our plan was recognized as one of the most comprehensive. Part of that requirement is that annually, the board certifies that we are in compliance. So tonight I'm asking the board to approve our plan as written. We are following that plan diligently and have maintained all of the requirements by the state of Oregon to comply with our HOS plan. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have of the plan at this time.
Thank you, Casey. I don't see any hands raised right now, so I am looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the Healthy and Safe Schools Plan.
Tag it.
So it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Jean Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Jackie Spross.
Aye.
And Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is awards bid for dairy products with Casey Walteach.
Yeah, thank you. We are due for updating our dairy product vendor. And spring, the Nutrition Services Staff and Nate Rodel went through an RFP process to select quotes and bids for dairy vendors. And through that process, we have identified Meadow Sweet Farms as the best vendor for us. The contract will be for the 21-22 school year and a renewal options for up to four additional years. I can answer any questions that you may have for this RFP.
I see Mark's hands raised.
Uh, just curious, like I, I don't recall us approving the fruit vendor or the hot dog vendor, but so is there something unique about the dairy vendor that is something we need to approve?
Yeah, there is a lot. A lot of the other vendors are, are through a cooperative purchasing agreement that we're able to already jump on. These are private vendors that are not a part of that. So we went out and did our own RFP process for this specific product.
Thanks.
See any other questions? So I'm looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors award the bid for supply and delivery of dairy products with renewal options for up to four additional years to Meadow Sweet Farms, beginning in the 2021-22 school year.
Second.
So it has been moved by Martin, seconded by Jackie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Jean Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Jackie Spross.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is a review of our Superintendent's Performance and Approved Performance Evaluation. And that is on me and Martin Granum, our Vice Chair. So I will invite Martin to read the evaluation letter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just begin by noting, we received 30 pages of input from the Superintendent and also undertook a rather thorough process whereby all, all of us directors were solicited for input. And the letter I'm about to read reflects input that came from all of us. This is a compilation of all of those observations and comments in our, in our duty as a board to evaluate Superintendent Mike Scott's performance. So I'll read it almost entirely and then I'll pass it back to Madam Chair for her to complete the reading of the letter. June 22, 2021 Superintendent Mike Scott from subject Annual Board of Directors Evaluation of Performance. Dear Superintendent Scott, the Hillsborough School District, HSD, Board of Directors has completed your evaluation for 2020-21 according to policy CBG Evaluation of the Superintendent. This year's standards-based model included a pre-evaluation survey compiled by individual board members, your self-evaluation that examines your leadership and operational performance, and a thorough board discussion guided by an independent consultant. Thank you for your continued exceptional service to the HSD community in this, your 12th year as Superintendent. As established, you were evaluated on nine standards for Superintendent performance. One, Leadership and Culture. Two, Policy and Governance. Three, Communication and Community Relations. Four, Organizational Management. Five, Facilities and Technology Management and Planning. Six, Instructional Leadership. Seven, Human Resources Management. Eight, Values and Ethics of Leadership. And nine, Equity and Cultural responsiveness. The board used a four-point scoring system with exceeding proficient, developing, and does not meet as descriptors. Superintendent Scott, the Board of Directors recognizes and values your exceptional integrity, tireless service, and recognize educational excellence in everything you do to lead and support our students, our district, and the larger community we serve. Mike, in our collective assessment, you exceed the standards, reflecting this board's resounding endorsement of your leadership and the operational performance of the district. To put this in numerical terms, out of a possible 4.0, you have scored a near-perfect 3.92 overall. Your highest rating in at least the last five years and a nearly impossible rating to top. Indeed, in six of the nine categories, you earned a perfect 4.0. We are exceedingly fortunate to have you as our Superintendent. Here are selected highlights from each of the nine standards. Standard one, Leadership and District Culture. The board assessed a perfect exceeding, noting you demonstrated extraordinary leadership in guiding our district and maintaining a positive culture under the most difficult of conditions ever encountered, the COVID-19 pandemic. Director's comments focused on your development and successful implementation of Comprehensive Distance Learning, CDL, leading a diligent year-long review of our School Resource Officer, SRO, program, and your long-established habit of leading by example. Your excellent relationships with our other jurisdictions, district partners, our associations, unions, parents, the board, numerous community groups, and especially with our students, were noted as a strength. Also noted is your effective empowerment of others, sharing leadership with your cabinet, building administrators, lay committee members, our parent advisory councils, and others. Standard two, Policy and Governance. The board assessed a perfect exceeding, noting your performance in this area is outstanding, particularly regarding receiving input and operationalizing guidance coming from the Oregon Health Authority, OHA, Oregon Department of Education, ODE, the Governor's Office, and many other sources. You ensured the board made informed policy decisions and the mission of the district was sustained throughout the pandemic. You were also commended for achieving a 100% review of all policies, a notable achievement under normal conditions, let alone this past year. Once again, you were recognized for the long and extensive SRO program review, including the outstanding work by staff, resulting in stakeholder engagement by our Black and Latinx communities especially, culminating in a revised intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with our law enforcement partners that is a model for others to emulate and a transparent SRO governance process going forward. One note for the future is a request for feedback to the board on the implementation and impact of board policies. Standard three, Communications and Community Relations. The board assessed a perfect exceeding, noting that during this time of great uncertainty, you and your district team regularly communicated the district's plan with students, families, staff, the board, and indeed the entire community. Hot news was commended particular, particularly. Many of the usual means of communications were sustained and others were retooled or reinvented to recognize the digital-centric arena we operated in during the pandemic, including new tools such as Google Meet, Zoom, and others used to facilitate communications and community relations. Families were kept informed and your communications team was described as the best ever seen, pushing fresh, relevant content across multiple platforms, including text, email, print, social media, web, phone, mail, newsletters, video, and more. With all this engagement success, also comes a desire for more, including more frequent meetings with local governments and opportunities to discuss concerns and share ideas with them. A desire to capture and develop best practices for engaging with our different groups and communities, and specifically a desire to engage with our students, perhaps even on a medium relevant to them, such as Instagram. Standard four, Organizational Management. The board assessed a perfect exceeding, commending you for meeting incredible pandemic challenges from distribution commending you for meeting incredible pandemic challenges from distribution of technology, including achieving a one-to-one device ratio and fielding hotspots to facilitate access to providing nutrition services to the entire community and repurposing staff to meet critical exigent needs. Your financial team was specifically commended for perfect audits, audits, perfect audits, again, and exceptional capture of unique funding opportunities such as work share and federal funding that were pandemic-driven. Despite increased costs, your finance team brilliantly matched requirements with resources to sustain a level of educational excellence that is simply remarkable during the pandemic. And the investment you made, you make in the bond oversight, budget, and audit committees keeps them high-functioning and reflects your proactive, transparent leadership style. Standard five, facilities and technology management and planning. The board assessed a perfect exceeding, noting that planning for a school begins many, many years before it is actually needed. You have developed the infrastructure to anticipate future needs and prepare the district to meet those needs, particularly regarding land acquisition and school boundary adjustments. The long-range planning committee was specifically commended. This hugely successful third year of the historic capital construction bond program was almost overshadowed by the pandemic. But the transparency achieved by the capital, business, and communication teams and the ongoing dedicated efforts of the Community Bond Oversight Committee spotlighted the 100% accomplishment of all promises to the voters. Also praised was the flawless audit of the bond program and the historic recognition of the audfolity first peoples of our district as part of the bond program. These historic accomplishments cannot go unremarked, nor can the deployment of 12,000-plus devices and over 2,500 hotspots go unnoticed. Your performance against the facilities and technology standards is truly remarkable. One request looking ahead is for fresh information regarding population growth and its impact on the district, particularly in light of emerging demographic trends. Standard six, instructional leadership. The board assessed a near-perfect exceeding, noting your continued emphasis on a district culture that emphasizes knowing every student by their name, strength, and need. This was a key factor in the steady, continuous increase in graduation rates under your leadership to a historic 87.07%. This is remarkably 4.5 percentage points higher than the state average and an indicator of the impact of your leadership. Numerous aspects of the district were praised that reflect the unique instructional approaches developed under your leadership, including creating modules for K-12 teachers and staff on teaching in interactive livestream during the hybrid learning, professional development for tribal history and shared history curriculum sponsored by ODE and the Confederated Tribes of Oregon, continued development of the Pathways Center, which will serve as the resource hub for all students who are navigating which career or college path is right for them, and the continuous expansion of our magnificent career and college pathways opportunities. Also praised are the various methods for measuring student success, including third-grade reading levels, ninth grade on-track, college and career participation, and graduation rates. Still, there is a need to figure out other methods of measuring student achievement with an eye for closing the opportunity gap. Pride was expressed on how your resource, your response to COVID helped us bridge the digital divide in our community. But work remains to close the opportunity gap, and your continued focus in this area is appreciated. The Community Curriculum Advisory Committee, CCAC, was praised as an inclusive, high-functioning, well-led committee that empowers the community and staff to be innovative and dynamic, encouraging fresh curriculum to be developed, reviewed, and adopted. This in turn empowers staff, grounds the curriculum in the community, and fosters curriculum that is current, relevant, and yields crossover appeal for learning across many subject areas. Standard seven, human resources management. The board assessed a perfect exceeding, praising the work you and your staff have done to ensure HSD has the best educators and are creative in the ways to accomplish this. Examples include your work to, quote, "grow our own," unquote, teachers and recruiting from other countries to increase staff diversity. You have championed the board's goals of diversifying our staff specifically in your leadership makeup. Indeed, during your tenure as superintendent, you have more than doubled staff diversity. Yet more work remains to achieve a staff that reflects the students and community we serve. Through pandemic concerns were very high at times, you successfully led the district through the bargaining process and reached agreement on comprehensive distance learning, CDL, Memorandums of Understanding, MOUs, for both licensed and classified unions. This was critical for the continuity of our students' education and returning our learners to in-person instruction at the earliest safe opportunity. You also continued to facilitate the Future Leaders Program to prepare the next group of administrators. During the formal bargaining, it was requested you consider collectively establishing intentions prior to the start of negotiations, helping to get everyone on the same page with intent and keeping students at the forefront of the discussions. It is noted that your leadership and positive working relationships with our labor unions made it possible to return our learners back to in-person instruction earlier than originally planned for some grade levels and with more instructional time. With contract negotiations ongoing with both associations, the respect and confidence all parties place in you personally is obvious, and the leadership team you have built to administer and lead the district is trusted by all parties. You have empowered your human resources, HR team, and administrators throughout the district, and mentored, trained, and prepared them to succeed at every level. You have invested in their relationships with their unions and their leadership, and that has fostered an atmosphere of trust and respect that fills our buildings and classrooms and is wonderful. Standard eight, values and ethics of leadership. The board assessed a perfect exceeding, noting that you represent the highest tier of moral and ethical leadership and are highly regarded by students, staff, and the community. Your calm and level-headedness stand out and demonstrates the highest bar of moral and ethical leadership. Your moral compass guided the district through the most challenging issues, such as the revision of our Comprehensive Sexuality Education, CSE, curriculum, and achieved an outcome that reflects our values, achieves the highest levels of instructional standards, and assures our students will be successful. Indeed, your values and ethics make you an unblemished point of reference for everyone in the state on all matters K-12. Standard nine, equity and cultural responsiveness. In this, our newest standard, the board assessed a near-perfect exceeding, expressing much appreciation for your pursuit of equity, diversity, and inclusion, EDI, across all aspects of the district. The board recognized huge strides in incorporating equity in our policy decisions and governance structure. We believe you are making good progress, but there is still so much work to do. You have worked diligently to ensure our policies and practices are seen through an equity lens. Examples include adopting policy and procedures in response to every student belongs, prohibiting specific symbols of hate, and developing a process for reporting and investigating bias incidents. One of the most critical things in the pandemic has been the ability to connect with our students and families. Through family outreach liaisons, the district has been able to spend time responding to calls and visiting families who need support or access to resources. We are pleased with the plan to receive monthly reports on our updated SRO program and look forward to reviewing them beginning next fall. The district continues our EDI journey, and the board is pleased to have a dedicated administrator to guide district efforts. We are further along than many districts, but the work continues. We will only truly reach exceeding in this standard when we close our opportunity gaps. Your development, nurturing, and empowerment of the PACs is a remarkable achievement. The Latinx PAC, Native American PAC, Black Family Village Advisory Committee, and soon, the Asian and Pacific Islander Family Engagement Committee are all high-functioning, impactful means to engage in a culturally specific way and help our students and families of color succeed in ways never before possible. This relatively new standard for superintendent evaluation is clearly a focus for you, and the board recognizes and appreciates your focus and the great strides made in this key standard. Since there is still so far to go on our EDI journey and so much progress left to be made, we hope to see you continue to prioritize this standard and push HSD to make even more progress. Looking ahead, the voters of this district just elected one of the most diverse boards in the state. An ongoing pursuit of a staff and district that mirrors the students and community we serve must certainly remain a top priority. Superintendent Scott, your leadership of the fourth-largest public school district in the state of Oregon, with 35 schools serving more than 20,000 students from preschool through 12th grade, is brilliant. You lead skilled, caring, and dedicated staff who are committed to supporting each student's academic and personal growth in safe and inclusive environments. You sustain strong community partnerships that allow us to provide unique opportunities to our students as they move through our system and prepare for life after high school. This board continues to be honored to work with you to engage and challenge all learners to ensure academic excellence so that all students graduate with career and college readiness skills.
Gracias por tu liderazgo durante los momentos más gratificantes y desafiantes. Thank you for all you do that makes us proud to be HSB. Sincerely, Erica Lopez, Board Chair, Martin Granum, Vice Chair, Lisa Allen, Sheen Kim, Yadira Martinez, Jackie Spross, Mark Watson. Thank you, Mike, for all your work. Now I'm looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors commend the superintendent for his leadership of the Hillsborough School District and direct that the evaluation letter be placed in his personnel file.
Second. So it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Lisa. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Rose, can you do a roll call, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Jackie Spross.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
The motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is our approval, to approve our 202122 board meeting dates.
All right. Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for the very generous evaluation. I will have some comments during the comment time, but just thank you very much. It's deeply appreciated. Our next item is to approve the meeting dates. We did go over those in the work session, and we really are just looking for a motion to approve the meeting dates for the 202122 school year.
Move that the Board of Directors approve the board meeting dates for the 202122 school year.
I will second.
So it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Lisa. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Martin Granum.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Jackie Spross.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Our next item is accept gifts and donation with Michelle Morrison.
Thank you, Erica. In the month of May, we received two donations over, well, one is at $5,000 and one is over $5,000. A donation of $5,370 from Lada Acres PTA to Lada Acres Elementary for the purchase of library chairs, and a donation of $5,000 from the Reeser Family Foundation to Miller Education Center, the Real World Personal Finance Grant Program. I'm looking for you to accept these donations.
Thanks, Michelle. Just looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors accept the donation of $5,370 from Lada Acres PTA to Lada Acres Elementary for purchase of library chairs, and the donation of $5,000 from the Reeser Family Foundation to Miller Education Center for the Real World Personal Finance Grant Program.
Second.
So it has been moved by Martin, seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Rose, can you do a roll call?
Lisa Allen. I saw you. Let's move. Martin Granum.
Aye.
Aye.
Sheen Kim. Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And next we have reports and discussion. Under reports and discussion, we have our financial report with Michelle.
Thank you again, Erica. We have our financial report in your packet. It kind of highlights what's going on in the business office currently, and it's a very busy place. One of the things that I'm really proud of is our finance team and how they are hearing the responses of our departments and our school staff regarding removing barriers to kids and families and getting them accessing education with their basic needs. And we've found a way that is going to really facilitate that better for us in the future. So taking an extra layer of work, but they're very excited to be able to serve in this way. And then the other piece is in our cash flow. We have a graphic. I don't know if you guys can see this. It's a sample of an analytics tool that we've been using and are ready to bring forward alongside of our cash flow worksheet so that you can get more of a visual representation of our trending in terms of spending. And we're looking at all of our major funds, not just the general fund. So that's kind of a sneak peek. And of course, I can answer any questions you might have about our regular cash flow report, which represents our spending through the month of May.
I don't see anything else raised on here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next item on our agenda is our oath of office. And we are going to administer the oath of office to both our newly elected board members and also our student representatives. And I'm looking to see if everybody that I need is on here as a panelist. All right. I'm just pulling up my documents so that I can read this correctly. So first up, we have our newly elected board members, and I will ask for Nancy Thomas. See that's on there. If you can unmute yourself, and I will ask you to repeat after me. And we usually do this in person. We hold our hands and, and this time is a little bit different. So I'm like adjusting myself just a second. So Nancy, repeat after me, and I'll try to pause and good breaks for everybody else as well to make sure I give you some opportunity to speak right after. Okay. I, Nancy Thomas.
I, Nancy Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Hillsborough School Dist, School District 1J.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Member.
I will faithfully discharge the duties and...
We'll try again. I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and partially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of School Board Member.
Of the Office of School Board Member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard. Our next elected school board member, newly elected, is Monique Ward. Monique, I will ask you to unmute. And I will ask you to lead after me. I, Monique Ward.
I, Monique Ward.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
And the policies of School District, Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of School Board Member.
Of the Office of School Board Member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next, we have our re-elected board member, Mark Watson. And I will have you raise your hand, Mark, and follow after me. I, Mark Watson.
I, Mark Watson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the Office.
Discharge the duties of the Office.
Of School Board Member.
Of School Board Member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And now I'm going to hand off the swearing into my vice chair, Martin Granham, to swear me in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Erica Lopez.
I, Erica Lopez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of School Board Member.
Of the Office of School Board Member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you. All right, next we have our new appointment of our student representatives to the Board of Directors and also administering the oath of office. So before we can, I can administer the oath of office, I need a motion from our board member.
I move that the Board of Directors appoint Seth Tronco, Kaylee Vasquez, and Jaclyn Perez to serve as student representatives of the Board of Directors for the 2021-22 school year and administer the oath of office.
Second.
So it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Jackie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Rose, can you do a roll call?
Lisa Allen.
Hi.
Martin Granham.
Hi.
Sheen Kim.
Hi.
Erica Lopez.
Hi.
Jackie Spross.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Watson votes aye.
Thank you.
The most, thank you. The motion carries. All right. Now, in the order I have, I will have Jaclyn Perez unmuted first. Raise your hand and repeat after me. Hi, Jaclyn Perez.
Hi, Jaclyn Perez.
Will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of student representative to the Hillsborough School District Board.
To...
Of student representative.
Of student representative to the Hillsborough.
To the Hillsborough School District Board.
Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Our next student representative is Seth Tronco. Seth, if you can unmute and follow after me. I, Seth Tronco.
I, Seth Tronco.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of student representative.
Of student representative.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
The Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Welcome aboard, Seth. Kaylee Vasquez. All right, I will have you follow after me and unmute. I, Kaylee Vasquez.
I, Kaylee Vasquez.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of student representative.
Of student representative.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the Hillsborough School Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, everyone. That is so exciting to have new, new members. Our next item on our agenda is our HCU and HEA reports. And I see on here Melody and Jill is on here. So whoever wants to go first and is ready.
Um, okay, I'll go first. Um, you would think after all of these, that these reports would get easier to deliver. I'm still nervous. And I hope my internet stays in. It's been unstable all night, it says, and I've been kicked out a couple of times, so. So, good evening. It's hard to believe that we've reached the end of the school year, and it's been a very bumpy road with a lot of twists and curves, but we've made it. So yay. And the many of our classified employees will have a much deserved vacation, and we do have many classified staff that will be working during the summer months to get our schools ready for the anticipated return in the fall. And we will, they will be working during these very hot months, so stay safe. Our board will be continuing our work during the summer to plan our activities for the next school year. We have many events that will benefit the classified staff and the students of Hillsborough Class, Hillsborough School District, such as relaunching our first book program. This program puts books into the hands of students that would not normally get to own a book. Many of our classified staff and our teachers really like this program and are all very excited when they see the students get a new book. So please watch for details in the fall for this program and the other programs that we will be, that we will be planning during the summer. Uh, we do have one more bargaining session on the calendar, June twenty-eighth. But beyond that, we have no other sessions scheduled, but we will be working with the district to get more on the calendar for in the fall. And I would like to thank all of our classified staff for all of the hard work throughout this year. And I would also like to thank the classified staff that will be working through the summer. Thank you. Please stay still. I guess I'm saying that again. See how nervous I get. Um, I would like to say a heartfelt goodbye to the outgoing school board members and the student reps. Devlin, I have always appreciated your words of honesty and your perspective. Jackie and Martin, it has been a pleasure working with you during the last few years. Martin, thank you for your continued support for the classified staff. And Jackie, I don't know if you remember, but I remember working with you during my own PTA days and when my kids were at Moo Berry. Um, you do ask the hard questions, and I really appreciate that. So thank you for both, both of you for your service. And I would also like to welcome the returning and the new board members and the new student representatives. Welcome. We look forward to working with you and to continue working with you. Well, that's my final report of the school year and for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Jill?
All right. Jill Gole, Hillsborough Education Association President. And this is to the school board directors and welcome everybody. As you did tonight and will in the future, review policies and approve other work of the district, I will ask for your continued dedication and commitment to equity. As you know, we HEA members put on an extremely high value on equity work, and we know that you do too. We are looking forward to working with Fran Snapi as the new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Program and Professional Development Officer. Boyfriend, that's a mouthful. We also look forward to working with the school board representatives and negotiations to further our equity goals as they play out in our collective bargained agreement. One thing that is pertinent today and also relates to negotiation is HEA's request that the annual Safe Schools Training be reviewed to ensure that it reflects our shared values around equity. For example, in the past, Safe Schools Training on how to support BIPOC and LGBTQ plus students was provided but offered as an option. We'd like to see all equity components in the Safe Schools Training valued as a necessity and teachers provided with the time needed to complete each course. HEA and the district had the opportunity to bargain three times before the end of the school year, and while it is not ideal to start negotiations so late in the year, it had to be done with the many adjustments that we all had to make. We are still in the process of exchanging proposals and will resume with our next session in September with a plan to meet twice monthly, hoping for an agreement prior to the end of the 2021 calendar year. I want to say thank you again to Jackie and Martin for your collaboration and support of HEA and of the teachers the association represents. Thank you, Maya Devlin and Ilham, for being the collective voice of your peers. We wish you all the best of luck as you pursue your life streams. And we'd like to welcome Kaylee, Jaclyn, and Seth. Congratulations, Nancy and Monique. We look forward to getting to know you both and to building a relationship that supports lifting up the teachers and educators in the district. We are looking forward to working with you next year. And I just want to say thank you, everyone, for all the hard work this last year and a half during COVID and the collaboration. And I am looking forward to a quiet summer and looking forward to seeing you folks again in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. And next we have our discussion time. And I think we already had our student representatives go earlier today because they had to leave for some activities. And so can we just get to the next one? Yeah, okay, good. So our next is superintendent's time.
All right, thank you. First of all, thank you for the evaluation. I'm just humbled by your kind words and feel like you're incredibly generous with that, and I is incredibly fortunate to work with such a great team. The cabinet members and the other executive team members that you see here on the screen on a monthly basis just put in hundreds and hundreds of hours over the weekend, over holiday breaks this past year, and the commitment and work ethic that they bring to work every day really allows for the type of evaluation that was just received. And I really don't look at that as my evaluation. I look at that as our evaluation. And so for all of the staff members here on the screen, thank you for everything you do every day on behalf of our students. I, I just appreciate it so much. To the parents and the community members out there, as we wrap up this school year, thank you for your patience and grace. Please know that every step of the way, we aim to act in the best interest of students, whether that be their social or their physical safety, their social emotional safety, or their academic interests. We really do look to work to their best interest at all times. So thank you for your patience and grace. To staff members and our unions and associations, throughout the year, we, as a, as a team, had to reinvent what education looked like. That happened four times over the last sixteen months. There's been four different iterations of the delivery of instructions. So thank you for your continued partnership in the, and the, just the work that we've done together. I appreciate you all so much and the, and the work that our teachers, our classified staff, all of our educators have done is just, just heartwarming and amazing. So, so thank you all. Um, to our board members, you have served during the most challenging time this past year. You know, there's a lot of people on the screen that have been at this for a long time, and there is nothing that compares to, to this past year and the, the amount of challenge that you've had to overcome and the humility and dedication with which you've served and met those challenges, I think is just beyond reproach. So, so thank you all. We are looking forward to a coming year where we continue our service to students in a way that hopefully is more typical of delivery models that we are, that we're used to and that the community is used to. To Jackie and Martin and Devlin and Ilham and Mia, thank you for your work, your service to the board. We appreciate you and we will, we will miss you. I know that we'll be able to stay in touch, but thank you for your service. And I'd like to welcome our new board members and student reps to Nancy and Monique. I should also say our re-elected board members as well to Erica and Mark, to our student reps Seth, Kaylee, and Jaclyn. We look forward to working with you and getting to know you. And again, just my profound thanks for this past year to everyone that has had a hand in providing the best experience that we possibly could for our students. Appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next we have our Board of Directors time, and I will start. I'm just going to go down my list here on the screen to see if there's anything you would like to add closing on our meeting, and I'll start with Jackie.
I really don't have anything else to say. I said it all earlier. It's been a complete and utter honor. And every single person, every single face I see on the screen, I know in my heart of hearts will do everything you can for what's best for students, no matter what. So I, I can pass the torch on to Monique with knowing that, that our kids are going to be taken care of.
Thanks, Jackie. Next we have Lisa.
All right. I, I did say quite a lot earlier. I, I'll just will add, um, thank you, Mike, for, for being such a good sport about your evaluation letter. I mean, I know that you should stream it every time, but it's well deserved, of course. And we appreciate you so much and your leadership over this really challenging year. I think the internet's doing the unstable things, so I sound weird to everybody. That's okay. I'll wrap it up, wrap it up, wrap it up. What else do I want to say? Um, I already said everything that I needed to say to, to Jackie and to Martin. We miss you very much. And thank you to... And thank you to Maya and Devlin and Ilham, and I'm very much looking forward to getting to have an in-person meeting in August for our retreat and getting to properly in person at that time. So excellent. And I don't know if our student reps are coming to that meeting or not, but when we do get to meet you all in person, I'm, I'm very much looking forward to that. So just a big welcome to Seth and to Kaylee and to Jaclyn. Look forward to getting to know all of you as well, in person, over the next year. And congratulations on your appointment and being sworn in. So I, that, that's all. Everybody has a great summer, and I can't wait till August.
Thanks, Lisa. Next, we have Mark, and then Martin, your own.
I think we all spoke a lot earlier, but yeah, so glad, glad to have the opportunity to serve with everybody on this screen. Thank you, Devlin, Maya, and Ilham for your service in the most challenging school board year ever. Looking forward to working with Seth, Jackie, and Kaylee. It's gonna be great to get to know you guys. Jackie and Martin, yeah, looking forward to seeing you out and about in the community at a Tuesday market or a Saturday farmer's market or just wherever we happen to intersect our path, and I couldn't love it more that, that the final motion Jackie made was to commend our superintendent on the great work he did. So that's pretty awesome. I, I look forward to hearing about whether or not it was more uncomfortable on Zoom or less uncomfortable on Zoom, because I know this isn't your favorite day of the year, and I also think it's very appropriate that Martin's final motion was to thank the organizations for their donations, because he worked to make that a thing that we do. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mark. Martin?
Well, I leave with a very satisfying sense of accomplishment of the district and the board, meeting the needs of our students in the community, and I look forward with great confidence and optimism of the new board and the new year and all the work we're gonna do to support our students in the community. Godspeed, everybody.
Thanks, Martin. And Sheen?
Well, I just want to say congratulations to everyone on the screen and off-screen. Congratulations. We somehow made it through this year, and even a huge shout out to parents, family members, guardians, who have students in our district and have supported your students in numerous ways through, throughout this crazy, crazy time. I will miss you, Martin and Jackie. I'm so thrilled to serve and work with you, Nancy and Monique, and I look forward to getting to know you all better. And yeah, I just, I, it's, it's a bittersweet time, but I look forward to what this next year brings. And might I add, our junior board member has stayed up for this entire board meeting, and so she was also very thrilled to see everyone take their oath of office, and so one day you guys will meet her in person as well. That is all. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheen. I joke, but we do have a baby rep to the board as well, so you all know, we, we start them young at HSD. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. Thank you for all of our newly elected board members for joining us earlier today and just seeing our, our group dynamic and also just giving the opportunity to thank Martin and Jackie for their work, and also just welcoming our newly elected, sorry, newly appointed student representatives to the board. I think it's fair to say, I think there's like a famous quote or something, I can't remember where, but that nothing is permanent except for change. And so here we are again, going into another big change into our dynamic of the school board and also into our learning environment, and I think everything that we do and everything that we've gone through has only created more resiliency in us as a community and as a district, and I am still proud to be HSD, and I will see you all at our next school board meeting. Thank you.